We're going to start the public session of the school board meeting for 6:15, 2020. And let's start out, I've got to get my hand up here. Start out with Fidel agents. So join me with the Fidel agents. Fidel agents, to the flag of the state.
That's me.
And to the republic, for which we stand.
One nation.
One nation.
One nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Let's go down to item three, which is first question is changes to the agenda. I would like to make a suggestion, if there's no objections, I'd like to move item seven to before item six. The reason is that we have quite a long agenda tonight, and I'd like to put the items of most public interest, cover them first so that as time goes on, we can focus more on board matters and less on those matters of public interest. So are there any objections moving those?
I can't see seven, and I don't have it up. Would you seven, please?
Seven is the elementary math resources discussion. I'd like to move that before the presentations.
That would be fine.
Okay, so if there's no objections, we'll do that. Okay, we'll leave it at that. Okay, are there any public comments? Before we go to public comments, Nick, you want to explain to everybody how they have an opportunity to make comments or ask questions?
Yeah, of course. So I'm sure most of you probably are aware of the spiel that I have going on, but I'll do it again just to make sure. We have three main ways that you can provide a public comment. First, and probably easiest for many people, would be the Zoom group chat option. You could just pop a message down in there. Please include your first, last name and town of residence, just so that we can, you know, properly report the message. Option number two, you could send me a text message to 603-933-0973. So again, same format, first, last name, town of residence, and the message. I would then read either of these out, you know, for the public. Option three is that under the participants tab, you do have the ability to raise your hand. And what that would do is that would give the ability to actually speak your comment. And again, first, last name, town of residence. So that, those are the three main ways that you can communicate via this meeting.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, do we have any public comments at this time? Okay, well, soon enough. We'll move on to superintendent's report. Ruben?
Yes, thank you. So we have completed the 2019-20 school year. And special thanks to the community of Jaff, the communities of Jaffrey and Ringe, and all those who helped make our senior graduation this past Friday possible, first of all. So the fact that it was even done and scheduled and planned. And then to go beyond that, it was fantastic. Many people commented on how wonderful it felt being outside in general, but also just being able to cap off this year. And the year has had its ups and downs, certainly. And certainly, the end of the year with the spring with COVID-19 gave us some of those challenges. But it was nice to be able to see this class end their time, their 12 to 13 years together, to end it together. And for the community just to provide such an uplifting amount of support. And just, there's a list over there on my superintendent's report, but I know that Kathy Furz put an incredible amount of time and effort into this. And certainly Harvey and Lee Sawyer with the airport. So I would like to really point their names out as people who really contributed significantly to the effort. Summer learning, we talked about that a little bit last time, about the majority of it being online still. However, we do have confirmation that Best Camp will be held. It's going to be at the Manana Christian Ministry site. This is the last year of the 10-year commitment that the Rotary has put into for what used to be called Quest Camp, now Best Camp. And so it's been planned out. There are a lot of activities and some guest speakers and guest educational groups coming in for that timeframe. And I think that it's going to be a fantastic opportunity for us to provide many of our students with an in-person camp-like experience. And so we anticipate about 50 students will take part. We don't think that we will have any more or really any fewer than that. Certainly, that's aided or helps to know that because we can only have 12, 10 to 12 people on a bus right now, that the four buses that we budgeted are going to be enough for us to transport our students to and from the location. Recently, we had a few, I think, facilities improvements of interest to the community. Our efforts over the last several years have been to improve our education for our youngest learners. We talked about graduation with our learners going off into the next phases of their lives. But we have a bunch who are going to be starting with us. And so both in Jaffrey Grade School and at the Ridge Memorial School, we were able to upgrade the upgrade or completely renovate or change over the playgrounds. And so you can see in these two pictures right here, just some additional playground equipment that Jaffrey Grade School had. You can see even in the back there, behind that new climbing structure, you can see those kind of blue, blue bars, I guess you could say, or metal objects in the back. Those are swing sets, so those were new as well. And if we go down to the pictures right here, our tennis courts, the nets aren't up yet. Maybe they were put up today, I don't know. But the, over the weekend, I went over, looked to see how the paint was drying and everything. And both the courts are nice and smooth. I went on, no cracks, nothing like that. Really just beautiful courts and the addition of those red lines for pickleball. And that may not mean a lot to a lot of people, but it is an opportunity for us to expand our community connection, I guess you could say, as pickleball is the number one growing recreational sport in the United States right now. And so it'll be interesting to see what we can do, both as with our students, but also with our community. And you can see the picture there of the largest structure, anyway, that is new to the RMS preschool playground. In the area of curriculum instruction assessment, we have the team that is working this past month on the learning management system and on mentoring processes and just getting our summer situated for curriculum work. They're doing a great job. This team is working very cohesively, very collaboratively. And we're excited to say that they've narrowed it down to about two solutions, have put together quite the matrix of comparison between these two solutions. One would be Empower, and the other one would be, whoops, I just lost the track of that name. The other one would be, I'll think of it in a minute. But anyway, the two of them, Otus. Otus is the other one, O-T-U-S. And so the team has put together a letter and surveys and so forth, and is putting that out to every single teacher out there to provide feedback with the avenue to view the different platforms or the solutions and to be able to play around with them a little bit as well. So that process continues to go on. It probably won't be, you know, in front of the board till a little bit later, maybe in July. But we're excited that we're getting the entire, or attempting to get the entire population involved in this search. If you look down at the last page there, this is just an example as we look toward, we had this conversation earlier today, as we look toward increasing our curriculum work, or more specifically, getting in a pattern and a routine and scheduling all our curriculum work through the years to come, we wanted to make sure that we have some consistency. And this is an example of one, just one, of the middle school standards, I guess you could say. On the bottom, the CCS standards, the, in the yellow, that's a progression. So a learning progression that we already had. And these proficiency scales that were in place already. What wasn't in place was the proficiency descriptors, which is, we've gone through and done all these ICAN statements, which are student-friendly and parent-friendly language. And then also the sample body of evidence. We've, in most cases, with the middle school sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math work that we've done, and in some cases with the elementary math work that's been done, we have the examples for levels two and three. And in many cases, we have one as well. Sometimes it's not really relevant. It's too basic. But just to give students and teachers a very clear example of what that level of rigor should be in order for something to be proficient. And this was done, there's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages. I just received it this past Friday from the high school math team that was working on this. And so I haven't reviewed everything for consistency and for completeness. But they've done a great job, and I'm excited about this document that we have here, and that is aiding our work going forward. And I'll take some questions.
If the board members have any questions for Ruben, what I'll do is I'll do a roll call and give everybody a chance to ask their questions. Patty, do you have any?
Did you say Heidi or Patty?
Patty.
No, thank you for this. I like this.
Heidi?
Yeah, no, just with the learning management system, Ruben, once one is chosen, the idea is to purchase it, and then the coming school year is to just practice using it, correct?
So the, well, first of all, we would bring it to the board and for consideration. But yeah, in general, purchasing it, and we budgeted around, or well, we'll be using grant funds. But we knew back in the time we were talking about it during November, December, that it was going to be around 18,000. Those numbers are still the same. For the first year, it gets less in the other years, but there's a startup cost to any of these. And then we would, yes, from a teacher's standpoint, the teachers, through this process of getting feedback, we're really starting to provide them about two to three hours, maybe, of professional development so that they can kind of work their way into it, get to know it a little bit. And so that, so that learning process starts really this month. And then they, as we come into the beginning of the year, we'll have a little more professional development over in the beginning and then throughout the course of the year. And some people will probably play in it a lot. And if it has, if we can utilize it, some people will utilize it for their students. Others will take some time, but it's going to be a time of just making certain that people are getting ready to be able to utilize it. And we originally had a timetable of, I don't know, five to six years of really the entire district utilizing this. I don't think we need to take that long to do so. We believe that this approach is going to actually expedite the implementation process. That being the case, once we deal with it in a grading kind of way, because there's a lot of uses for the learning management system, grading is just one function. When we start utilizing it in that way, we do need to be careful at the speed that we implement it so that, it doesn't matter as much in elementary or even middle school, but high school, we need to be careful about how we step it in and that we communicate very well the timeframes that we're talking about going forward.
Okay, thank you.
John, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. I wanted to just make a mention of one additional group that contributed to the graduation, that sort of worked behind the scenes, but I think they should be acknowledged, and that was the Lions Club, in particular, Laura Gifford. They made, I believe, about 120 face masks using the Conan colors. And then on 100 of them for the graduates, they put a stencil saying, "Class of 2020." So I know they worked on that for weeks in the afternoons, a few days a week. I'm not even sure what their schedule was, but they were, they did a lot of work with that. A number of staff people and a few interact kids also went over and participated as volunteers in that process.
Thank you.
And Ruben, I just wanted to ask about the information you provided about the curriculum instruction and assessment and the learning management system. Those all sound great, and thank you for the update on them. I know one of your priorities was to try to facilitate opportunities for staff, particularly within a department, to work together and to have time to learn about the very thing that, you know, you're talking about in terms of, you know, integrating a curriculum to make sure that everyone or every student is receiving, you know, access to a similar type of instruction or curriculum. So I just wanted to ask, how has that gone? And are there, do you have any chance, any expectations to either increase that or to modify your system for that? And, you know, along with that, I know advisory, was it modified somewhat this past year from what it had been in the previous school year? I was just wondering if you have any thoughts on that going forward? Are we in a good place on the advisory now? Or are there thoughts that you have for modifying that further?
Sure. I mean, some of these questions might be able to be better answered at a presentation later on in this, this agenda. David, talking about the social-emotional side of things. The, the design of the advisory certainly was different this year than it was the year before. Cutting that time in half, you know, certainly is a big piece of that. As you know, we went through some of the conversations and changes last year around the schedule. As for the functionality of what's happening during advisory, there is a lot of good that's going on and in pockets. I would say that consistency is not necessarily there across the board. We did utilize advisory and the advisors and so forth for communication during this remote learning time, and that was helpful. And there were some who did meet with their advisees, either one-on-one or in small groups. How that will look in the coming year, I think there's just more collaboration and planning amongst the staff to help that effort to smooth out and improve and be the best tool possible for communication and support of our students. The first part of your question had to do with people getting kind of acclimated or on board with, or perhaps understanding the curriculum structure. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, departments working together to share their, you know, how they teach and what they can learn from each other, I guess.
So two factors there. This past year, especially with the middle and high school, they did have common planning time. Now, I've seen the schedules for next year, and that common planning time will continue and perhaps even be enhanced just a little bit, especially with the Unified Arts. The, we did have quite a good amount of middle school and high school interaction with the area of mathematics. And so that is something that we saw a lot of positive results. We've, you know, it was really pretty universal with the feedback that we need to do more and more of that with all the subject areas. So we need to start with, as we are going to try to this summer, with writing. Writing and reading are huge pieces of curriculum and much bigger than mathematics. And so if we focus on writing, where our goal is to get eight to 10 individuals from the whole spectrum of teachers, you know, kindergarten through grade 12, to be able to collaborate and share and to make sure that the work that we are doing is very well articulated so that we have a good progression of what's happening and what's being taught and learned throughout the system. So within the schools themselves, like the elementary schools, with their collaboration with one another, certainly, we had a good deal of collaboration based upon the feedback that we had during this remote time. We have, I can't say we have really solid plans. We have to do more to make sure that that's going to continue to happen at the grade level at the preschool through fifth grade. Certainly, this year, the board made a pretty new type of decision with adding some half-days to the schedule, three to be exact. I think that's a safe number to add. And I think that will be utilized very well within the RMS and JGS schools. And we have, really, truthfully, is the best way to make sure that all that collaboration and interaction continues to happen is just to have very clear plans that are articulated, written down and articulated. And so that's the plan for the summer, is to get that three-to-five-year plan, leaning more toward five-year plan of how all of that is going to take place in segments, to continue to improve that. Because that's, the more we improve that, the better everything becomes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, John?
No.
Laurel, do you have any questions?
I'll reserve my questions and comments for the curriculum section of tonight's agenda.
Okay, and Alicia, do you have any questions?
I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you, Ruben. Okay, let's move on to consent agenda. Bring that up here. Okay, does anybody have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda? We need to remove, before we move on, we need to remove June 5th. Okay, go ahead. Patty, do you have anything?
No.
Heidi?
No.
John?
No.
Laurel?
Have you removed the June 5th minutes?
I did.
Okay, we need to add some items to the consent agenda. Two resignations, Lee Parker effective June 15th this year, and David Beauchamp effective June 30th this year. We also need to add meeting minutes for March 11th, 2020 for a correction.
Okay, you have anything else, Laurel?
No, sir.
All right, the correction that we're adding is simply a date correction from 2020, from 3030 to 2020.
Yes.
There's no other substance changes. Okay, Alicia, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay, okay, so do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you, Heidi, second?
Second.
Is it Patty?
Yep.
So a motion second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor? I'll do a roll call. Patty?
Yes.
Heidi?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
Laurel?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the motion carries 600. Okay, the June 5th public minutes, there's no change except, oh, I was not in attendance. So do I have a motion for the June 5th minutes?
I have some changes.
You have some changes?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Some of it might be my memory, but if we look at page three, the last paragraph, please.
I think it's the wrong date, Laurel, isn't it? That it should be the June 1st.
Yeah, if you're referring to secondary page, that would be the first minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
What page was that on that you were referring to?
Page three. Regarding the finance manager. No, so there you go. So maybe I don't, maybe I am misremembering, but this seems to imply that if the board acts on what's proposed in tonight's agenda, that we are saying that there is an opportunity for advancement down the road. And I just want to be sure that we are clear that when we have a high-level position open up in our district, that we perform a search.
So the, the conversation during that timeframe, was, by me anyway, was saying that we have had the history of going out for a search. I indicated that we do have someone internally that has some good, strong skills in this area and would love for a promotion. But if the board wants us to go for a search, as you just mentioned, that certainly, that's well and good.
I guess I'm not being clear. This seems to imply that with, if, if the business administrator position becomes available, the finance manager would just be able to step in.
Well, what we were saying, yeah, so.
I just want to.
Is there a different way we should say it? So that doesn't imply what you're, because what I said was that we were looking at succession planning and that it would behoove us to be able to have that type of backup support to be able to go in that direction for us to have options.
So Ruben, perhaps if we just changed a few words, okay?
Sure.
Instead of with the thought that she would be able to take over for the business administrator, perhaps we just say that she, with the thought that she would acquire the skills that prepare her.
To be a viable candidate.
Yeah, no, I think that's fantastic. I think it's a great way to put it, because I think that's what we tried to state.
Okay.
Yeah, I can certainly make that change.
Thank you.
I can definitely, I can definitely see why you would want that changed.
Okay.
So, go ahead, Laurel.
If we're done with that one, I have one more, one other thing.
Go ahead.
So on page five, for the item 12 motion, I think the word "and" should be "any." So the part that's in bold, Laurel McKenzie moved that the board authorized the district, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, along with any other buybacks triggered instead of "and."
Are you referring to the highlighted "and"?
Yeah. Yes, I should say yes, not yeah. That was, those were my only comments.
Okay, so I'll make a suggestion that we not approve this until our next meeting.
Because we already approved them?
Technically, we have approved them, so we would need a new, I would think, an altered motion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't make one, so Laurel?
So can we just make a motion to change that the, can we just change the date on the last motion that we, or do we have to do a totally new?
Or can we just say, "I moved that we unapprove the June 1?"
No, what we need to do, let's go back, let's go back to the motion to approve the.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda, okay. And let's amend that motion. And then, you made the motion, so you can, you have to amend it.
Okay, so we can amend the motion to approve the consent agenda.
Without the June, without the June 1 and the June 5th.
Okay, without the, without the June 1 and the June 5th meeting minutes. And now, now we need to go back and.
Now we need a second, and then we need to. John, seconds. Okay, all in favor? Patty?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yes.
Okay, and I approve, so it's 600. Now, we have the June 1st and the June 5th minutes have not yet been approved. Okay. I'm going to suggest that the June 1st, is it?
Yep.
Go back, June 1st, that the June 1st we not approve until the next meeting. They'll give you a chance to make a change, the wording changes, Nick. Okay? All right, and now for the June 5th one. The only issue with the June 5th one is that I was absent, so we need to have a roll call vote to approve it.
So I'll move that we approve the June 5th public meeting minutes.
Thank, thank you, John. The second? That is
Second, Patty.
Patty, thank you, Patty, okay. Roll call vote, Patty?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Laurel?
Abstain.
Alicia?
Yes.
And I abstain, so the motion carries 402. Okay.
Good.
Now, let's see. All right, let's go on now to our discussion of elementary mathematics resources. Susan has a floor, is that correct?
Yes, so when you say discussion, I'm not sure if you want me to talk through this, that feels like a presentation, or do I want me to take questions and answers?
Why don't you go through it, please?
Okay. So our last math program, we went through a, an adoption process that included piloting three different programs for a year and, and then adopting fully in the fall of 2014. At that point in time, we were looking at a variety of programs, many of which were making the transition from pre-common core to common core math. And I would say that that transition was not fully complete in 2014. So two things have happened since we've adopted that. One is that math programs that are better aligned to common core and are more rigorous have been introduced. And also, we have an online subscription that is heavily used for our math and focus program that is expiring. Our, our purchase of that was probably for, must have been for five years or so, five or six years. And so it meant that a decision action needed to be taken to move forward. So another sign that actually needed to be taken was in August, one of our back to school workshops involved looking at assessments that were being used in math. And it became obvious that we had different focal points or different types of assessments being used. Some of that was great and some of it was a sign that we don't, didn't currently have the consistency that really is needed across schools, grade levels and districts. I think, do you need to advance, yeah, I think you need to advance this, Nick, right, versus me? So what we're working towards is, of course, having a guaranteed and viable curriculum. Knowing that, well, not everybody is on the same page or teaching in a step lock way that a student within our district is guaranteed certain things, no matter what class or school that they're in. And that that will carry on in a consistent longitudinal fashion. So what we have in place, we have our learning progressions. We have those rigorous outcomes and the complex reasoning that goes with it. And what we are adding to that, as the examples Ruben showed from middle school, we're looking at the addition of I can statements to really make those learning progressions come to life and also looking at body of evidence. So what, what would we actually see when a student is doing that? So that work was ongoing this year with a small team. And then in mid-November, we also pulled together a different small team, a math research team. It was open membership, everybody that volunteered participated. And the task was to identify what resources are highly rated and out there now that could help us build that guaranteed viable curriculum. With another goal being filling the gap, you can have the standards, but then how are those successfully implemented? So we wanted to look at resources that help us bridge that. So our timeline, November to January, did a lot of research. Used pretty extensively this ed reports. It has very thorough evaluations of a lot of different programs. There are a lot that don't get high ratings as far as checking off all of the assessed areas. So we looked, narrowed it down to the most highly rated. The committee took a look at those and narrowed down to three resources. Eureka, Engage New York, they're the same curriculum packaged a bit differently. Zern, which actually is also based on the Engage New York program. And then Bridges in Mathematics. We introduced all of those to the staff in February, February on a workshop day and took feedback. And then continued to offer opportunities for staff to explore those in the months following. Obviously, some of our plans were not quite as anticipated, given that we were not in person in school. We couldn't, for example, do program visits out at school, other schools who were already using these. However, it did get people to explore things probably in a more in-depth way than they would have because they were able to use some of the things as online resources. So this slide shows some of the things that we were looking for in a resource. And we found that the one that we're recommending brought forward to you is Zern and that it checked all the boxes. The other program that checked all the boxes was, or most of the boxes, I take that back, was Eureka. I'm not sure you're, Engage New York was the original program, it's free to everyone online and can be easily accessed. Eureka is the next phase of that. It's a program that's offer a resource that's offered for purchase. It's more dynamic in that they will update it, whereas Engage New York is what it is, I'm going to say. We talked to a math curriculum person from a nearby district. And one of her opening statements was, well, we've been using Eureka for about five years now and it feels like we're finally getting it. And the reason user friendly for students and teachers is highlighted on this list is that Zern offers the same curriculum, but is packaged in a way that is much easier to access and get to know and to work with. And we will still be able to use Engage New York because that's really the source of the curriculum in Zern. However, it is packaged in a way that's going to help us access it, understand it, learn it much more readily. And then the next slide, just show, gives a glimpse at how the scope and sequence works. As you can see, early focus builds up through the years to change at the end towards more fraction, fraction decimal work. So there is scaffolding, things are spiraled. It's all aligned with common core and thus our, our learning progressions in JR. The instruction delivery method. Kindergarten is slightly different than the rest. Teacher-led instruction, of course, still focusing on what we've been working on for, you know, a long time now as far as the concrete, pictorial, abstract sequence of instruction. So having children working with manipulatives, picture representations, et cetera, having discussions about that. And then leading into practice. There are digital activities starting in kindergarten, but also it's not all digital, there are collaborative games, teacher-led activities. Grades one through five has a full group section that focuses on fluency word problems, mathematical thinking, having discussions. And then a great feature of this program is that it focuses on small group instruction so that you can customize it more easily for the students in your class. So teacher-led small groups balanced with then independent student work, which can be digital. And, but again, can also be hands-on, it can be the kinds of stations and things that we currently use. So flexibility there. And a great thing is that formative assessment is built in all the time through these exit tickets. In addition to Zern, one thing we have looked at is what is another resource that can be used as a find and fix solution? So where are the gaps and then how can we fix them? So through some, when it was obvious that we had some grant money available, some research was done. A lot of time spent by Jen and Storm and Nikki looking at a variety of resources. And MobiMax is one that has offerings in pretty much every content area. There, it offers placement tests so that you can see exactly where kids' strengths and gaps are. For example, you may have a student working that is, who's in the fourth grade. But when he or she takes a placement test, you know, there may be standard, on grade level standards they're working on. But they may also have a standard or two down in second grade that isn't showing up as proficient. So this program allows, first of all, the program will self-direct the student to what he or she needs, but also allows the teacher to look at where those strands are missing and fill them in with additional instruction. So back to Zern. A school account, 2,500. An additional 2,500 to make sure we have all of the professional development components available. So that includes not just initial implementation, because what can often happen is you get the company rep and they do their spiel the first, you know, a few days of school and then you don't see them much. But this has on-demand curriculum study. So if I'm a teacher and I'm doing a particular unit and I need to know more about the mathematical practice related to that, it's there for me. You can purchase printed materials. It will, we will have to work with teachers to see, are those valuable for us or would it be better to copy the things from online, everything in the printed materials is available online. And how will we know it's working? We have lots of assessments that we can track. Certainly, there are great reports even within both Zern and MobiMax. Both individual students, school, district reports that we can get. But then we obviously also have our district or state assessments that we can also analyze to look at progress over time. So something we are excited to see just fairly recently is that Zern, they've been very active during remote learning and opened up a lot of their product information that would typically be by subscription for, for free use. But one thing they have created is a learning recovery system. So one component of that, for example, is they have posted and parents can access it for free. If my child has just finished second grade, I can look and, and it will have 10 lessons there that I could work with my child on over the summer focusing on the key content of second grade math. And both helping me understand it and helping me work with my child and activities for my child to do. But there is also, they've also looked ahead to the fall and the worry that we all have as to what, what will we find in the fall? Will we have broader gaps than we usually see? And they have added diagnostic pieces and remediation pieces for the fall so that a first unit in the fall actually looks at key components of the previous grade and gives you a chance to assess those and to remediate those, fill in those gaps. So that you make sure that's in line before you move forward. All right, so those are the main components I wanted to share. And I would take questions.
Any further questions, is there anything that you want to add, Ruben?
Well, no, well, sure. Just maybe a couple items, because on one of the slides, as we talk about any sort of program or materials or resources, we're always talking about budgetary items. And so I think two slides back, if we could go to, I think, slide 10 it is, yep, right there. You can see that the implementation in 2014, 15 was actually a fairly expensive implementation. It started off with a $60,000 and then on top of that, $10,000 per school. And some of that's lessened through the years, but that's quite a bit of money that was invested in during that timeframe. This is a much smaller investment with, I think, a much superior product. It's, I am very much familiar with the Engage New York, Eureka programming, certainly when engaged, I followed that when they designed it originally out of the era funds that happened during, well, several years ago. And it's just, it's just phenomenal problem sets and I think good materials for teachers as well to be able to understand how to best teach the curriculum. Something that's important is that this is a K through 5 or P through 5 program. And so we were really looking for something that was going to give us some K8 or P8 continuity. And years ago, we had some money that we, I brought, you know, to the attention of the board for curriculum adoption, I guess it was the last year we had a curriculum adoption cycle because we didn't really go through a process of vetting things, but we bought some materials in the hopes and plan to utilize them in 6 through 8, as 6 through 8 mathematics has been an area for a while that we've wanted to focus on and continue to get stronger. Some of those materials were not utilized very well by, by teachers in the past and they have been resurrected this year. Matter of fact, our data, I kind of wish that we could have gone back and reassessed from our New Hampshire SAS. Our data in our seventh grade who was utilizing those materials and doing word problem after word problem after word problem showed that there were some pretty significantly good results. And maybe at the beginning of the year, we'll assess and see where that all landed. But the rigor that But the rigor that, not the content, but the higher order thinking skills that are required within this curriculum are just, as again, superior to the other programs that are out there. And that's the reason why I'm sure that Consumer Report program talked about why this program was, first of all, when it came out and still is, the best program out there. And it's, you can utilize it as is, or you can adapt it to what your curriculum is. You don't have to do every single step. Some of it, some of the programming that is out there for Engage New York is pretty granular, step by step. So I'm very excited about this proposition. I think that what excites me even more is that ZERN appears to be a tool that is going to really help us model or help us with the implementation of where we want to go for, from a customization and personalization standpoint. And when I heard the excitement from a couple of the teachers who were utilizing it a little more thoroughly, I guess you could say, within this remote time, but even before this remote time, they were just really excited about the power of the small group instruction that this particular program sets up for them and was set up for all teachers. And I do believe it's a, it's not, it's not a magic wand. It's going to take work, but it provides the necessary resources and supports that are going to help us to improve. And will help with our middle school programming as well, because it's going to have some continuity.
Thank you. Let's understand what it is we expect to do tonight. This is a proposal relative to a math curriculum change. And that in order to do that, it requires two iterations for the board. So that the board has an opportunity to review and think about it between the time that it's and the time that it's approved. So you're, what you're looking for tonight is simply some questions so that the board has a better understanding of it? Am I correct?
Well, I think that, you know, our policy certainly is laid out that way and I'm not going to argue with the policy. Apart from the concept of MobiMax, having that online program that is K through 12, am I correct in that, Susan? It's K, not preschool?
I believe it's K.
Okay, K through 12. We would like to release that as a support for students as fast as we possibly can. I know that Jen Horn has written a letter that is ready to go out to all parents with how to access this and to be able to help or, you know, have their students utilize this as soon as possible and throughout the entire summer. Heather Lindstad has gone out in the community and found people to donate prizes and so forth, so we can enter kids into raffles as they go and they work on this through the summer. So the sooner we could do that, the better. MobiMax is not something that we had budgeted for. It is something that we get to, I suppose, try out through, because of these grants that we received from remote learning, specifically with IDEA, which is the special education grants. And we'd love to get that started as soon as possible. And, you know, maybe down the road, I think that what we'd have to do is see, are there other programs that we're currently utilizing that we're paying for that we don't need to utilize that this program might be able to replace? Certainly, we're not interested in adding to our budget another $10,000, which is what MobiMax costs for an entire district of our size anyway. District license for a year. We can wait a little bit, we can wait a little bit on the ZERN, but the MobiMax would be helpful to approve if possible and waive, and waive that portion of the policy.
Okay, but did you say that the MobiMax is all, doesn't require any funding from the board? It's funded through grants?
The majority of it is that was funded. I asked Jen, originally I was informed that it was all through grants. It is 80% funded through the grant. There was some money that was through savings due to remote learning and special education.
So you're saying that MobiMax has already been procured?
It has been purchased.
Okay. So
But it has not been implemented. Well, I, I think that some, some of it had been implemented due to some free.
So this is, this is basically you're asking for a rubber stamp?
I am asking for a rubber stamp.
I guess in this one situation, I could go along with that, but we need to understand that. And you were with us working on the I policies when we went through them, letter by letter. We developed those for a reason. Okay? And going forward, when we adopt instructional materials or curriculum, they need to come to the board before we actually procure.
I agree.
Okay, so before, before we do that, I want to find out if there's any questions from board relative to the entire math curriculum in ZERN and MobiMax. So I'll do it in roll call fashion. Patty, do you have any questions for Susan?
I just want to commend Susan and the committee, because I think this has been a really well laid out plan of addressing this. The timeline is solid, their decision-making, the research that they conducted. And I, I just really appreciate the timeliness of it and their effort. That's terrific.
Thank you.
Heidi?
I agree with Patty and I think, you know, listening, reading through the presentation before the meeting and, and listening to it ahead of time and then hearing it again, I just, I feel like, yeah, you've made some, done a lot of research and it, it looks like a very good decision to me. So thank you for the, the work on this.
John?
Yes, I, I sort of concur. I appreciate Laurel bringing up the policy. I think we should try and stick to those, even though, you know, maybe sometimes we will find we want to go back and change a policy, even though it's, you know, newly changed. But, but in this case, in particular, I'm just glad to see the presentation. Last week's Education Committee meeting was a little bit, it was a little bit stop and start for, for, for some of us. But Nick did send us a link to the presentation that helped. And certainly the presentation tonight from Susan, as well as the document that we received as an attachment to go through has really been helpful. So I'm, I'm very supportive of this and grateful to be, you know, that we're going forward.
Laurel?
I have some questions. Well, first of all, I want to say that I appreciated the the video of the Education Committee and the recommendation to go 45 minutes in to start with the curriculum portion. And Susan, as always, you and your team have done a terrific job and in your presentation of this. Thank you very much. My, some of my questions are or comments are, one, I think if we could put that, a link to that video with the start time for the math curriculum portion somehow flagged on our website, because we do make a point of wanting to involve parents in our curriculum decisions. So if we could make that full presentation available, I, I think that would be terrific. During the presentation, Nicola mentioned a ZERN and MobiMax overview links that she could send to the committee members. I would appreciate receiving those also and being able to take a look at the actual products. One question I have is, was any input solicited from the middle school math teachers in this process?
The input from the high school and middle school was that they wanted to make sure there was continuity across all the way through. And so there was no direct input for ZERN itself. But certainly the fact that it is a, an Engage New York foundation or base makes it so that there's continuity. They'll be pleased.
I would appreciate, Ruben, if you could prepare information for us regarding where this will be funded from in our budget. So we don't have anything in our adoption cycle for the elementary schools, but there's online subscription lines. Maybe some of, maybe, maybe we carry forward something for Math and Focus.
Yeah, we put, we put 15,000 in and I just can't remember which line it was. I think it was in the district curriculum line, but I'll have to look and get back to you. I think that's a good, that's a good question. I should give you that answer, but we definitely put 15,000 in. Because we reduced some other lines to be able to make sure we could do that.
Okay, and I am a little bit curious about the printed materials, because if, if a quarter of the elementary school-aged children needed printed materials, that would be another, you know, in excess of $14,000.
So we have continued to budget at the elementary level for some Math and Focus workbooks. I'm anticipating, and again, I don't know for sure how many ultimately will end up purchasing, but I'm anticipating that the book money budgeted for Math and Focus will cover any book money here.
So that would be part of Ruben's little financial report on this. Okay, terrific. So after, sorry, one more question. And Charlie brought this up actually during the committee meeting, a question regarding the technology. If there would have to be any changes to hardware and/or infrastructure to really make this a success?
Well, we have both class sets of Chromebooks, starting in third grade. About half, at least at JGS, about half-class sets in second grade. And K1 has smaller numbers. So we would anticipate that for the most part, we already have the technology that is needed. We may need to boost the number of Chromebooks we have in the K1, two classes. But that would not be a significant increase needed.
So if, if 25% of the students are online at any one time, the school has the bandwidth, if you will, to make sure that they're getting the speed that they need to. You know.
I mean, I would assume that there are times now that we have 25% on and we have not experienced issues with that.
Okay. And then lastly, the, I, I took a look at our progressions for math for elementary and I see that we've added a number of checklists. But I, we seem to have lost the higher grade outcomes.
So we took out for this presentation, the slides that demonstrated the work that's being done to add body of evidence and I can statement. So I think those are examples of the work being done to make sure that my impression of a three is meeting the rigorous standards of what it should be. Is that your question or?
Well, I guess the second part of my question would be, if body of evidence has been developed for some part of the learning outcomes in mathematics, would it be possible to share those? And just, I, I would be interested in looking at those in comparison with this, what is it called? The scope and direction document that was presented for ZERN. I mean, I can't tell you how thrilled I am to be on the board when we're considering adoption big educational program. It's the first time since I've been on the board that we've done this. It's thrilling. And I think that was it. Okay, so. And you said MobiMax is $10,000, Ruben, and that's being funded through IDEA?
By and large, yep, through IDEA.
By and large. Okay. So we would budget for that next year if, if it's a success.
If it is successful and it's, yep. And that it gives us the data we want and it's helping us to make good movement and decisions, it might, it might be something we budget for.
Well, okay. Thank you.
If, if it's, well, let's put it this way, if it's, if it's, if it's a really good product, I think is what your point was.
Right. Well, I think, I think, I don't think you're going to have a full experience of using it before we get to the budgeting session. Probably.
Right, we'll have to see how the summer implementation goes.
But was it, was it not used somewhat during the remote learning time? I thought it was one of the tools that had some free access.
Yes. Yeah. So there's some experience with it.
Yes.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Laurel. Alicia, did you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I did just want to thank Susan and her team for putting this presentation together and really just the work that you guys have done vetting this program. As a parent, I'm excited about it. As a board member, I'm excited about it. I think it gives us a lot of opportunity in the areas of assessment and feedback to our learners and I can't wait to move forward with it.
Great.
Great. Thank you, Alicia. My comments are the same. I'd also like to compliment you, Susan, and Nikki and Kelly for the presentation that you gave earlier to the committee. It was quite a bit longer, quite a bit more detailed and quite a bit of effort went into it. So thank you very much. Okay, I have a question to the board. We have before us the opportunity to approve MobiMax. I don't know if anyone wants to do that. Someone would have to make a motion.
I'd like to make that motion, Charlie. Sorry.
Sorry?
I said I'd like to make that motion, but I didn't realize you had a second thing.
That's okay. Go ahead. I will cover the second one there. Okay, Alicia, Alicia moves. Do we have a second?
A second.
30 seconds. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote and the motion is to approve the funding and use of the MobiMax.
Are we going to have any discussion?
Yes.
Okay. I haven't had an opportunity to do any research on MobiMax. So is it really detrimental to wait until July 6?
It, well, it's got, it's multiple weeks of not being able to be in the hands of students across the district for remediation. And, you know, it's, it all depends on the amount of use. I think it's, I think it's valuable to, to go forward. I mean, we've had a very interesting end of the year. Tools like this, we certainly have used. It's not going to, I, I think it would be, it would help to have it approved.
Can I ask a question? Susan, not to put you on the spot, but can you speak to any your experience or what the teachers experienced with it? And is there another product that's comparable? I, I mean, it, it sounds like there is some experience in that it, that, you know, I mean, it, it sounds like there is some experience in that it, that, you know, people are talking this.
Um, it is a tool that's been available for a long time. It's not a curriculum that we've adopted, but it is a resource that has been especially valuable within intervention programs. Title I teachers have used it, again, with that find and fix model. So being able to have students take preliminary assessment. And the reports are not only valuable for teachers, you can sit down with the student and say, this is why we're doing this lesson. And why we're working on this. And then the student can take a follow-up assessment and see his or her own progress. Oh, I, I had a gap here and now I don't. So being a tool that can really be used to target individual needs is a way that it has been used and is very valuable.
Is there more discussion? Anyone?
No, I'd just like to say I'm impressed by the size of the team and the, well, the composition of the math research team. Makes me feel comfortable that they've got the right product for, especially for this size of investment teams. Seems like the way to go.
Thank you, John. So any other discussion?
I guess I would just like to say, you know, while I understand, you know, Laurel's point in wanting to make sure that, that we're dotting all the i's and crossing the t's in the future, I do, it concerns me that this wouldn't be available to students. Especially given, you know, these past few months have been not, not normal. And so I think having this available for students over the summer sounds crucial to me.
I agree.
Thank you, Heidi. Is there any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of Moby Max. I'll go for a roll call vote right now. Patty?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Laurel?
I'll abstain.
Alicia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So motion carries five, zero, one. Okay. Did the board want to entertain approving the rest of the curriculum, or should we wait until the next meeting?
I believe we should wait until the next meeting.
I'm sorry?
I believe we should wait until the next meeting.
Okay, well, I heard no motion tonight, and we'll just wait till next one, next meeting.
I have one last question for Susan. Is, is, do you, when you did the last math curriculum process, was there any interaction with the PTO group? Informing them of the
Well,
recommendation?
There actually was engagement of the whole parent community because each classroom was doing a program. So we had three math programs running at the same time. And to tell you the truth, I don't recall. Did we do a formal survey? Did we take informal feedback? I, I'm not sure. So we have had informally because of remote learning. I can just say informally, I've had people either through teachers or emailing me directly asking about, is this going to be available during the summer? So we've had some positive feedback.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else on the subject? All right, thank you, Susan. Okay, moving on. See if I can get this up here. Okay. Next, we have our presentations, JRM, CHS, Social Emotional Data with David Dustin. Dave, are you ready?
Yeah, let me just see if I can pull this up. Nick, are we able to share my screen?
I am working on it and seeing if I can get it up for you.
Well, well, let me just pull over to the side here and see if I can.
It's not giving me an option, unfortunately.
Are you looking down at the bottom or share screen for you? There's a carrot next to that. And then one of the options, you should be able to change the, the option on yours to allow attendee to their screens.
Is there a way that you request to share? Because I'm not getting any options for additional sharing, unfortunately.
No, the, yeah, there, there's only, it's only available to be changed by the person hosting the meetings. That's, that's okay. It's no big deal. My animations will help you save for another day.
How about?
You may have to stop sharing your screen to be able to change the options. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll try it. Real quick for you.
I want animation.
All right, does that open you up at all? I changed a few settings.
There we go.
Here we go. Yeah, that was a trick. I just had to exit out of my screen, so.
Way to teach, David.
All right, so I was asked to come to the board tonight and do sort of an update on the social emotional supports that are taking place at the middle high school. Specifically, what we had been doing over the past year and the planning of the even to next year. And obviously, the end of the year with the shift over to remote learning has thrown a little bit of a kink in what we had been providing, but we've been continuing to move forward. But first, I'll take a look at the scope of the work that we did this year. We started off by looking at creating structures for our teacher teams to do more discussion of the needs of our learners. And that was partially because we recognized that there was an increase in social emotional needs coming forward. And we felt like the teams of teachers, both at the middle school, on their grade level teams, and at the high school in their content departments, should have a forum to be able to discuss those and work on supports sort of at their team level. And the middle level has had a program to do that or a support structure for quite some time that we were able to roll up to the high school and the, and the content level teams and sort of create some of that same discussion process there. So the, the common planning time that Ruben was referencing earlier has been really pivotal for both looking at assessments this year of learning and doing curriculum work and things like that. But it's also been really helpful for the social emotional structures. The second thing we looked to do was to build a stronger school-wide structure. We have a lot of shared staff and resources between the middle and high school at this point, which is wonderful. It allows us to have a lot more fluidity and connection between the resources that we're able to offer. But we recognized at the end of last school year, as we were coming into this one that we just finished off, that we didn't really have good school-wide structures to take referrals from teachers and teams and then collaborate to identify interventions now that we were sharing so many resources. So the 2019, 2020 school year also kicked off with building some of those school-wide structures. We also sought to define the supports that were available with a three-tiered approach, which was with all the different sort of structures that were in place previously. Prior to the 2019, 2020 school year, we thought there was a lot of, you know, sort of pieces moving in different directions, and we needed to do a better job defining those. And then continuing to prove acts, improve access that our teachers have to the strategies and resources that support learners. So those were the four big areas that we had decided way back in August of 2019 to focus on in the 2019, 2020 on school year. And we did define at the very start of the year, there was a very large meeting that took place that had all of the various support pieces in our school and special education and administration. We met to sort of chart out what, what we did to serve learners, both on an academic sense, but also a social and emotional need sense. I came up with three tiers. The first tier being what services are available for all learners. The second tier, what's available through some basic referral processes. And the third tier, what was available for some interventions. So this sort of kicked off the 2019, 2020 school year in terms of helping us to chart a direction that we were seeking to go. Currently, we have sort of three social emotional supports that are in existence. We have what we've called the connect team, a behavior intervention program in school counseling. And they each have their sort of distinctive areas that they look at. If we look at connect, a lot of what they do is social work on, on the social aspect of that social emotional learning and wellness piece. Connecting with families and the community and helping to build connections where there may be some overlap or overflow and challenges taking place at home or in school. To the alternate environment, if it's a home challenge, that's impacting school, building a bridge and helping to find connections and vice versa. If there's school challenge that are impacting home, trying to resolve some of those. This connects team has focused on regular check-ins, both with reaching out to parents and really supporting what's going on at school through interaction with them. But also checking in with the learners throughout the course of the day. And there's a lot of ongoing intervention that that team does throughout the course of the day with learners. The second piece of behavior intervention programs that we have in place that we've continued to grow, our learner support process, which is actually a specific process that was created, is one avenue that we worked on supporting behaviors and improving some of those social emotional aspects. At the middle level, we have an assist program that's sort of morphed and become more a part of the connect program. Where at the high school, we have the assist program and the compass program that provide different access to learning for learners who have particular social emotional or other challenges, like anxiety in the classroom or things like that. And then again, regular check-ins were a part of that. And then our school counseling team has also been providing support in this area, really focusing in some ways on academic and future planning, but also trying to support learner needs when they arise in regular check-ins. On that, on all suicidal IDH and duty to warrant situations where a learner has expressed some suicidal intent or some, some language that indicates they may harm themselves. They've taken sort of the lead on those areas. Hope I'm not sure why that's, okay. So just a couple of slides to demonstrate where this need exists as we charted out this year. This is data that was through the end of the school year. Again, recognizing that with March sort of disrupting the normal processes, this, we don't have a good clean comparison to prior years. But as of the end of the year, we had 48 referrals that were made to our learner support team that were focused specifically on social emotional concerns. And the chart down here demonstrates what it looks like in a graphical way. You can sort of see how they peaked up here in 10th grade, but the total numbers of referrals and then it went back down a little bit as time went on. Another area that demonstrates some need is, was who the connect team was seeing over the course of the year. There were 65 distinct learners who were on the connect team case load throughout the course of the year. All of them received regular family check-ins from the connect team members. And on that team, they're further broken down into learners who just need that check-in daily and giving them a space to sort of decompress all the way up to learners who are considered very serious sort of concerns and may have much more regular interaction with the connects team. 30 learners on the connect load, for example, their only intervention is a quiet workspace and perhaps some in-classroom support. Or the connect team working with teachers to help with strategies to help, you know, keep them in the classroom. And then there was 15 learners whose needs were quite intensive, and they received connection to outside counseling and ongoing intensive support throughout the course of the day. Another way of looking at this is the school counseling services, what the demonstrated needs of baseline over the course of the year. They reported 44 duty to warrant situations that took place. And just to give you a sense of the, you know, the commitment that that, that just one of those could take. When we receive notification of those, that the process of going through and ensuring the safety to the learner and the appropriate connection with resources, it could consume an entire afternoon for some of these folks. So 44 is, is a lot. But, you know, fortunately, they were able to step in rapidly work towards safety of learners. There were 22 situations where conflicts emerged and a mediation was sought between the parties involved in the conflict through school counseling. And 151, you know, calendar appointments for specific counseling for, for social emotional reasons. And there are some other data points that provide sort of a symptom of some of these social emotional challenges. And I'll go into the first one a little bit more on the next couple of slides. But when we're thinking about social emotional need and supporting the learning of individuals who have some social emotional challenges that might need some support, discipline data often provides that. I think discipline is a symptom of social emotional need. So when you see, you know, discipline issues arising in the classroom, for example, that sometimes is a symptom of other needs taking place. At the second half of the year, we had started to see a trend down in discipline data in the middle level. And this entire year was a trend down for the high school, but it still was, was higher than some years past. Truancy and attendance numbers can be an indicator of social emotional need, especially if there's something taking place where the learner was feeling unsafe, coming to school or being at home or things like that. So we often keep an eye on that data. And the third thing that we take a look at is where learners are fitting into our alternative learning programs and the numbers of learners in those settings. Well, I wanted to dive a little bit deeper into the discipline data. I know you've seen this a little bit at a previous presentation. But this graph on the left shows CHS data, and way on the left is the 2019 numbers for the sort of major category. That year versus this year, you can see a bunch of decline in almost all the areas at CHS. There are mess with the story. We saw some areas staying flat, some areas increasing. This data was through on February, and then we obviously didn't have the data after that point. But, um, you know, this is another thing that where we take a look and say, okay, we know that in 11th and 12th grade, this, the, you know, reported social emotional pieces on the learner support team sort of went down. We know that in the middle school, the data has trended up with discipline. We know that that's, we see a trend up as we look at sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The numbers of referrals is something that we would want to keep an eye on. Our discipline process was one of the first things that we took a look at to ensure that we are addressing the underlying, like with social emotional needs or other, other needs that might be causing it. We have a pretty robust discipline program at this point. Mrs. Durand and myself have spent the last two years on it, and this year especially, refining and getting a consistent program that really emphasizes that it's for our growth mindset. We begin our discipline approach by taking a look at the handbooks, which are, you know, indicate both the policy, but also provide us with the appropriate earned consequences in a way that's consistent, and we think that's important. Accountability for behavior and having consequences that are prescribed for that behavior are a critical sort of foundational step. But a lot of discipline programs end there. You've earned your consequence. You sort of do your time and you move on and hopefully don't do it again. Because we know that there's a lot more that goes on in our district, has a really strong sense of, of imports of learning and recognizing the underlying needs and concerns that could lead to discipline beyond that. So all of our discipline interactions will include some sort of a reflective process of learning that takes place. If it's a very serious interaction or breaking of the rules, like a fight or use of, you know, illegal substance or plagiarism or things like that. That learning could be extensive and have quite a bit of opponents to it. If it's something more minor, it might be a quicker conversation piece or something where we're able to reflect with the learner in a shorter timeframe. We often will connect learners who are involved in a discipline process with some sort of a support throughout the course of them working through their process. It could be bringing in their school counselors throughout the course of the day to check in with them. It could be asking for the assist team to check in or bringing in our connects team or things like that. We all, almost always try to circle the learner back to the adult or teacher who referred them for the discipline interaction. We think that that's an important component of, again, shifting back here and helping the learner recognize that consequences aren't about serving time, but sort of making right the situation. And also helping hopefully that learner and that adult to make a connection where there is an underlying piece that led to that discipline interaction that the learner and the teacher can get on the same page and solve that, you know, together as they move forward. And then if there's a repeat of discipline challenges, that's when things, you know, have a quick avenue to then be referred to our school-wide learner support process. Make sure that it's not just a repeating of disciplines for the pieces that may or may not be working. So we really tried to work on this discipline program the last two years. Take that social emotional piece into account and make sure we're aligned with our district's overall focus on growth mindset and learning. We also worked this past year on creating what, what I had said earlier, was that school-wide structure for teams and teachers to have a referral. And this year, we had a school-wide learner support team that was created to bring in these really sort of extreme challenges for either academic or social emotional needs. The first piece of this team's interaction for social emotional support comes with the identification of the need. We asked that the, at the team level, teams discuss these in their PLCs. So if it's at a level, that would be the grade level team meeting discussing learner and. Learner and the learner's needs and possible interventions. The high school, it would be their department teams. These meetings typically include counseling team members and administration. If there's an intervention that's attempted, it's always asked that it be documented so we can see what's been working to support a learner and what hasn't been. And when progress is not adequately made, it's at this stage when we created a referral to a larger team. That includes representation from all of our different support processes. That school-wide team would review the learner's needs as documented by the team, as well as the interventions that were attempted. And then make recommendations by their escalate this to another type of intervention. So that this has previously been what, you know, was, would be a tier one sort of intervention. That resources for everybody were being utilized. It might be time to escalate it to a tier two approach or a tier three approach. And also recognizing that there may be other interventions that could be. So that team this year, some of the interventions they did was to refer them to school counseling and administration. Monitoring and checking in and things like that. Sometimes there'd be referral to the connect team and they would begin through this learner support team, that intensive family outreach and looking for additional support. Sometimes we would refer them to the assist or compass programs. If there was a lot of anxiety that was present or a lot of social challenges being in the classroom. Emotional pieces that were getting in the way of success. Oftentimes compass or assist would be a place where we would say, let's go to the lab and see if that's able to support their learning. Sometimes it became evident that there may be specialized education pieces that are not fully in place yet. And so this team sometimes referred for testing or to five oh four coordinator to see if assessments were needed. Sometimes it was also to administration for other following for the outside agencies. So we did a lot of work this year in terms of identifying where we were able to find success, creating some structures. Finding time for the teams to work together, coming up with some sort of known interventions that could work. Really refining our discipline approach to make sure that it's taking into account the needs of learners and the growth mindset and maintaining. And things like that. But there were still some difficulties that we found. One thing that there's, as is taking place everywhere currently, you know, around us. There's a rising number of social emotional needs that are becoming evident. Part of this is likely because we have the resources in place and learners are coming forward more regularly to support, which is a good thing, but it does present. The second thing that became apparent this year was that there were some inefficiencies built in with our support. We didn't have a team. There was different, as I'd say, different components for our social emotional support. And we found that that was a problem and things like that. And sometimes this even looks like everybody trying to support or resolve a situation or overlooked because there was that lack of team. As the year went on, there's going to need to be some additional sort of work on that. So we had some open questions, you know, what's the process for escalating a concern if it's more immediate? Right now there's a pretty large lag time sometimes where things work through a process and it might be evident right out of the gate that there needs to be a faster escalation. Level meetings, exclusive be it attendance in those, how can we facilitate the timely intervention? People's time and making sure that it's working efficiently. One of the questions we had, how can we ensure our support structures are working with this cohesive approach and having a common voice? How do we improve the vision for our support programming? So we can make sure that there's stability taking place with specific vision for support when we look at interventions. We're always asking the question, how we can continue to improve our access to community resources and bringing our families the support they may need. What ongoing, you know, monitoring should we be using? How can we make sure that's being used to ensure that data is driving our decisions and ensuring. See of our support programs. So those are all things that we sort of ended the year thinking about as we look back. One of the things we've already done before we've concluded this year in light of what we found is create one unified team. That's, you know, adopting that connect moniker, but it's going to include a team leader. Who's going to folk, going to focus for next year on being that unifying voice and helping to make sure that everyone's pulling in one direction. And will consist of three distinct components. Our school counselors are a member of this team. You know, our connect team, which we're calling peer and family support, and then our five oh four wellness person will also be on that. And we've worked to define these roles with that team already. We spent a chunk of time sending goals together and really. Charting out, you know, what are the areas we need to improve on, where are our strengths, et cetera. One thing that this new team leader will be doing is spending some time visiting over the course of the year with their team and with the. Identify the critical support areas that we know we need and ensure that our vision encompasses those so we can continue to move forward. Part of their, their job is going to be to continue working with teams. We started this work this spring, continuing to do this, work with the team members to clarify the roles of each part of this connects team. And streamline the efficiency of how people can access those so we can have a reduction in overlap and an increase. And how wide we're able to spread our supports and make sure that we're catching learners as soon as possible who may need us. This individual will facilitate those regular team meetings, ensuring that progress monitoring is taking place and ensuring that if we need to progress, the interventions. Additional tiers or moving along sort of a spectrum of support, that we have that to place in a timely manner. And continue to facilitate that school-wide learner support process that we know is a big difference this year. And of course, looking to seek out additional resources because we know that we can do more. Our school counselors as members of this team, a big piece of what, what they believed was an important component of the vision of. One was the future planning aspect, making sure that they're working with a full middle and high school population. To think about the future goal setting and use those sort of forward-thinking pieces with them. To help redirect and focus even in times where there may be other challenges arising. Increasing the amount of proactive support that's taking place on the academic side and ensuring intervention. We see any need, but especially social emotional ones taking place. Continuing to provide a lot of the tier one support for learners within the school. And then providing that regular tier one family connection. A lot of that will follow our school counselors umbrella, so they have a more focused approach to support learners. Within this team, we have got two individuals, Melissa Juress, who was hired as a social worker slash sixth grade counselor last year. And our behavior specialist at the middle level, Caitlin, they're working together to continue to focus on regular in-classroom support for learners. Both on the behavioral side, but also again, thinking about where social emotional needs are influencing as they often do on behavioral needs. Providing regular check-in for tier two and tier three learners, making lots of connections with families. Continuing to contribute with an aspect, running social groups and doing a lot of direct instruction that will really fall on them as we move forward. And then our wellness and five oh four coordinator, who's Gretchen Booth Peaball, will continue to focus on the identification of five oh four. Providing support for teachers. This is a big one where there, where there's a team that creates five oh fours. Sometimes in prior years, we haven't done as nice of a job following up with the learners and also with the teachers to ensure that the teachers. Understand and can support the needs of the learners as identified. And Gretchen's done a really nice job the last year, increasing the amount of access and time in classrooms. And I know that's something she's looking at continuing to do. She'll continue to work with administration. She's done a nice job in some of our crisis moments this year. She's been at the forefront of helping to identify resources and working with all learners to make sure that we have good social emotional wellness. Sort of planning and initiatives taking place. And again, supporting her other team members will be a part of her role. So we're pretty confident that with the team more structured, having a clear leader, working together physically, spending time closer to each other. Checking in more regularly, that that will help to pluck the blocks and sort of increase the overall efficiency of that team. And we've identified some ongoing work that will take place as we look into the next school year. One of the things is continuing to revisit our compass and assist programs at the high school. They clearly do a wonderful job, you know, in the compass aspect, supporting learners who need to compete at least success. Outside of the normal classroom setting and assist, really providing anchoring and support to a wide variety of learners. We're looking at extending and expanding the services that they can provide. You know, this year shifting some specialized resources perhaps is one option that's being looked at. I know that the assist team at the high school has a really beautiful vision that they'd like to continue to finesse for how they could see that program growing. Into perhaps alternate opportunities that really could connect with some of these social emotional needs. And then our behavior intervention strategies at the middle level could likely provide some support to the high school. Free synergy as well. Another area that we focus on this upcoming year is continuing to improve and streamline the learner support process. The clarity of the team level process at the high school is still needed. They asked for some additional support up here, which I think is wonderful that there's. Something that will be provided, continuing to improve the referral process, make sure, making sure things are timely. And having a lot more of a procedure for what to do between meetings when there's a need that arises. And we're always looking for more resources, but we recognize this year, as many school districts are in this area, that we need partnerships and more. Think, you know, outside the box thinking for how we can work with different organizations. Who might be able to provide resources and support that we don't have in-house. Already we've tried to reach out and find access to places like the River Center and Antioch, who have continued to provide support. Reality Check, where you're in town is a resource we're continuing to access. We've done some work with Chelsea Zalansky from, she was working out in the Hinsdale Youth Department, or excuse me, Hillsborough Dairy Department. To provide diversion programming and things like that. She's been coming into the school and doing some work as well. So continuing to do that identification outreach will be a critical piece as well. And that's it. That's my last piece. I'm open to. Obviously answering any questions or discussing any of these areas. Back to you.
I'll open her up now for questions from the board. Patty.
Thank you, David. That was a phenomenal presentation and I feel much more informed having had it. I'm curious, and you don't necessarily have to answer this right now, but I'm curious about. The factors that are influencing the behavior and if our students are getting enough. Education and training around communication, conflict resolution. On that side, on the student side, sorry if there's this echo. And then. You know, sometimes there's classroom management issues. And issues between teachers and students and consistency and all kinds of other aspects of it that influence behavior. And I just wonder when I see the spikes of. In the middle school particularly, if it's about circumstantial reaction or inability to communicate. If that has more to do with it, how underlying do you guys get?
Well, I mean, we get pretty extensive when there's behavior challenges that come up because it is important to try to identify the root of that. You know, of that behavior, you know, I'd say the sort of old school approach to managing a behavior was you've got to ask, why? And we move on and you may never really understand what the root of that was. Sometimes to a fault, Michelle Durand and myself have spent a lot of time trying to drill down with learners and really get a sense of. Why this behavior is taking place. And I'd say a good, a good portion of it is social emotional need that's coming to the surface. Learners who are having trouble regulating in larger group settings or especially in transitions. Really having trouble with appropriateness and things like that, or whatever, perhaps like you said, lacking communication skills or things like that might contribute to that. I think in the middle school, what we, what we recognized is, you know, a few things. One is a need for, certainly a need for transition programming and things like that to support direct instruction to learners. When it comes to being in a more fluid and open social environment than perhaps they're used to at the elementary schools. There's, you know, once you enter the middle school, it's a lot bigger. You're interacting with learners from a different town who you may not have interacted with. There's more transitions that take place in the hallways that aren't directly monitored by walking with a teacher, for example, and things like that. And I, you know, one of the things that, that we've seen is that early on, that can be a challenge for learners. And can contribute to some of those, those rippling behaviors as they progress through the middle school. And so I think that's one area and we've, you know, been working with Melissa Juress, who's, you know, double, does double duty as a sixth grade counselor. This upcoming year, she's going to be offering a quarter-long class to all of the learners. On some of that social emotional transition stuff and providing some direct instruction. On being successful in a social emotional scale as well as an academic scale in middle school. And we think with some deliberate programming there, that's going to be really helpful. The second thing that we've recognized at the middle level is a continue, a continued work, I guess, with the teachers. To transition how we look at the school environment, at the expectations in the school. At how we sort of lay out what the middle school experience is going to look like. To continue to shift away from a very heavy compliance-based system. Where it's here's the list of rules and if you don't follow them, you know, here's what we're going to do. To more of a system where we focus on norms and creating a culture for learning and encouraging learners to think. And the example that I think best captures that shift that we're working on is if you think of. That, that rule of walking on the right side of the hall, that might be a rule that you put in place. All learners will walk on the right side of the hall. If you come to a staircase with that in your mindset and there's a large group walking up the stairs and they're taking up the entire staircase, but you're trained to think. I must walk down the right side of the stairs because I always must walk on the right. You know, you're going to plow through that group of people in front of you because you're walking on the right, even though they're taking up all of the space. The shift we're looking for would be to train the learners to think differently. It's a norm in our school that we demonstrate respect in the hallway for others who might, who might be passing by, for example. And in that same scenario, that learner who's trained to think critically when they encounter that situation. Might see that crowd coming up the stairs and say to themselves, the norm in our school is that we are respectful of each other's space. I'm going to let them go by before I proceed, you know? So shifting from that very heavy rule and compliance-based sort of approach to that, that middle school philosophy of thinking of norms and a culture for learning. Is something we're continuing to work on. And our eighth grade team this year began the year with some heavy culture work around norms and did a beautiful job. And then, you know, working to extend that through the year would be the next step as, as we continue to move forward. So that's the second thing we're sort of taking a look at with the middle school. And I lost because that was a very long-winded second one, so I apologize. But yes, to your point, there is, there's other pieces with that discipline stuff that we're going to continue working on. And I know our teachers are excited to continue to find ways to do that together.
Thank you.
And, oh, the third one, I remember it. It's culture. It's general school culture in terms of the teams. We've already done some physical moving with our teams for this upcoming year. The seventh grade team, for example, is moving to the top of the, of the. Older part of the middle level, that third floor area, so they can really have that as their team space. We're encouraging them to think about the culture that they create amongst themselves. So that their learners recognize that as space that they are going to do their learning and they can take control of that area, so to speak, as a team. We're looking at the eighth grade doing that with their physical space and the sixth grade as well. Again, to reinforce the positive culture that takes place in the school and a sense of camaraderie that takes place within their grade level teams. So there's a lot of pieces of that, that the, that the teachers have already identified and are planning on working on. But yes, your, your point is very valid.
Patty.
Thank you.
Patty, do you have any questions?
Yeah, so sort of piggybacking on that, David, I know I've been in various meetings where we have talked about. Possibly adopting some kind of social emotional curriculum that. Where maybe ten minutes of every day at every grade level is devoted to addressing. You know, issues around social emotional things or just. You know, trying to teach kids to have more sensitivity towards others. And so it sounds to me like that's a lot of grade level work that maybe will be created by the different teams. So has there been any discussion about actually. Adopting a specific curriculum? I know there's several of them out there. Ruben, you can probably speak to that because I know you've mentioned one. Several times too. So I just wondered if there was anything. Another layer of this or if it's more. You know, it sounds pretty focused heavily in the, in the middle school and then at the high school, is there, you know, similar plan or?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I think, I think where it comes to looking at the middle school's social emotional curriculum. I don't know that we're, you know, at a place yet where we're ready to start looking at adopting a curriculum for instruction. Because we're still trying to finesse how we create the culture for learning and think about the supports that are available for our learners. But the, the teachers in the middle level have asked for additional flexibility with some portions of the day to be able to do more team focus on things like you just described. If there is a regular point throughout the course of the year where they want to take some time. And redirect as a team onto their norms and think about the culture that's being created and things like that, just as one example. And we've been able to accomplish that for them this upcoming year to give them some of that additional time by making a very minor tweak. To the, the time periods in the morning for the daily schedule for the middle school. By moving the advisory just for the middle school to the beginning of the day, but leaving it in place for the high school. That allows for the first two instructional periods and advisory at the middle school. They could conceivably on their teams use that time for co-curricular projects on an academic side of things. And having, you know, a hundred and ten minutes or whatever of time to do that work. Or to do like at the beginning of the year and at regular intervals throughout the year, spending time as teens in their advisory groups. As it makes sense for each grade level to focus back on their norms, to have community meetings. And to again, create a sense of what each grade level team is going to look like and how they're going to focus on their success together. So that will allow for the third period onward to be completely aligned between the two schools still. It doesn't change any instructional time, except again, that minor shift allowing them to have some time in the morning. So right now we're still trying to do, mostly do work where we look at the supports that are available for learners. And how we can be proactive in creating a more positive culture for learning within the teams. And then in the high school, continuing to identify how we can be efficient in identifying and providing support. I think in the next, you know, couple of years, we would certainly want to look at as we have really clear systems and a really clear team in place. Then identifying a curriculum and looking at who, who best would implement that and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
John, do you have any questions?
Yes, I guess I'll just try and focus on a resource question for you, David. When I look at the different things. When I look at the different things that you're doing and it almost is just overwhelming to me, the amount of inputs that you have, the challenges that you're trying to address. And it's both fascinating, but also kind of overwhelming to digest it all. But it would appear that you're using resources both from the special education portion of the, of the school resources, but also from the entire school, from the, from the teachers and the nurses and the counselors, but also compass, assist, connect. Well, would you say overall in terms of what you're talking about tonight, that what would the split be in terms of how many, how many, how much of the resources are coming from the special education services? How much coming from the regular school resources?
Well, I think one thing to note is that assisting compass are actually considered general ed placements, even though they may serve special ed learners from time to time. So that's, that's one piece that we talk about a lot of times is making sure that we're very clear when we, when we say that a learner might live or from time encompass. That is already considered to be both a general ed placement as well as a possibility for special ed learners. So with that being said, it's hard for me to say, you know, this percentage is going to special ed versus general ed. But the team needs, we tend to take a look at each learner and say, okay, you know, this learner is presenting with a lot of anxiety in the classroom. They're having trouble staying in the classroom for the duration of the period. They're expressing, you know, repeatedly that their nerves are stretching up or whatever it may be. Okay. With this learner, it might make sense to try compass. Let's give it a try and see where that, what that does in two weeks or whatever. You know, the times that we look at special ed specifically are when we have more of an academic need that comes up where there might be serious, like if a learner is having challenges, every reading component in the classes and we notice that their past testing data and a file review demonstrates that they're really behind. That's when that team might say, okay, let's refer this learner to the special education team and have them begin their pre-referral process that way. So it's, it's hard for me to say a percentage of breakdown in that way because again, we just don't look at it, you know, I guess through that lens of saying this is a special ed versus a regular ed sort of need.
Sure, of course. David, are there any areas where you're feeling that you do not have enough resources?
Well, I mean, as any school around here right now would say, I don't think there's enough resources in general in our, in our to support some of the needs that we're seeing. You know, it's, it's really difficult. For example, if there's a learner who could benefit from having a regular, you know, connection with an outside counselor, for example. It's really hard to refer a learner to an outside counselor or to refer a family. There's just not a lot out there who have a lot of openings currently. And some families, the only access they get to supporting, you know, social emotional needs happens within the school. And we don't always have the resources within the school to be able to support that, you know, using outside community partners. So I, I'd say the biggest thing that we're continuing to find a need with that we're trying to catch up is that outside support and having enough connections for the really intensive needs that come up to be able to refer them and find success in that way.
Okay. And I would just like to pass on a thought, I guess. The New Hampshire Legislature decided to form a committee this year to look at school funding. And the committee has been working very actively, starting a few months ago. They're actively soliciting input and, you know, a lot of the focus is on whether the state should be providing more funding for adequate education or redefining what an adequate education is. But the floor is kind of open for input and the Carcy School of Public Policy at UNH has been reaching out to people asking for input. And so I guess my, my question is, you know, in terms of the kind of emotional support resources that you need, and as you just described, that are not available perhaps in other places in the community or in the state. If there's input that should be going to that school funding commission on this subject, it would be, you know, good to, to provide that and certainly I hope that, you know, you and Ruben will talk about that. And if there's a message that should be gotten to the legislators, then we'd like to help you get it to them.
Yeah, I mean, that's something I'll certainly, you know, spend some time with Ruben, taking a look at in terms of what feedback we can give that would be helpful. I, I think any definition of adequate education that doesn't include some measure of social emotional learning or support is probably lagging in today's needs that we're seeing with kids. And that's, that's really the bottom line. And it's, it's not a Jeffrey Ringe challenge that's exclusive to us. You know, any school that you look at locally, any public school is seeing a similar spike in a similar, you know, in some cases, you know, actions based on that spike that are really difficult for the community to grapple with and to redirect learners back to learning. So that's not specific, but you know, that one, one initial, like right off the bat input would be that's something that probably has not been considered education, but it's absolutely essential today.
Good. John?
Yep.
Okay. Laurel, do you have any questions?
I do. So it looks like your work this upcoming year depends fairly heavily on what you've identified as the connect leader. Is that person identified?
Yes, we did an application process with the members of that, of this new sort of combined team. And it's going to be Caitlin Shattuck, who's currently working as the behavior interventionist at the middle school assist program. So we've spent some time with her. She's been a part of the district's leadership cohort this past year that was taking the coursework through Keene State and doing the cohort work together. So it's a good, a great opportunity for her as well to bring to bear a lot of the leadership and school wide sort of, you know, visioning that's taken place through that cohort of coursework and immediately begin applying it into this team.
And what kind of a position is that?
So it's, it's a team leader position like the other ones in the school. So it's a stipended, a fixed stipend position. We, we in the past have had a middle level school counselor coordinator and a high school school counselor coordinator from when we used to have distinctive teams. And with only two school counselors, that meant for the last two years, each school counselor was also a coordinator essentially of themselves. So we were able to adjust how that looked. So again, use the funding that was already in place for the coordinators that existed and on this bigger team, identify some leadership that way.
Okay, that's great. And then my, I've always been curious about what the difference between assist and compass was in the high school, but it sounds like you're sort of rolling this all into one program or support structure.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, yes, essentially this is, you know, all of these components are part of our learner support process. And while both, you know, Greg and Kathy, who head up assist and compass respectively, do have a caseload of some special education learners that they manage, you know, as part of their responsibilities. Their actual programs serve a much wider group of learners. And, you know, the assist program has traditionally, I suppose, has evolved from a traditional route of being an anchoring piece with learners who might need some pullout support to achieve academically in the classrooms, but also might need a social anchor or an emotional anchor in the school. And they've, it's evolved into a program that provides that resource, but also sometimes provides alternative education pathways for learners. Sometimes provides credit recovery or additional rep teaching opportunities in a smaller setting for learners who struggle in the larger setting. So they've taken that angle while compass has become more of, almost like an all encompassing program for some learners really do need the bulk of their day in a smaller, more focused setting that's personalized very heavily to the learning progressions. So they've, they've sort of diverged in that way, but we remain a part of a larger umbrella of supporting learners who have a variety of social, emotional and academic needs.
Okay. So that almost sounds like compass is a school within a school.
For many of the learners, that's exactly what it has become. Yes. Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laurel. Alicia, do you have any questions?
My question was about curriculum, but Heidi and Patty already addressed that, so I don't have any further questions.
Okay. Thank you. Dave, I appreciate your presentation. I learned a lot. One thing I wanted to say is that I really appreciate the data because the data does provide an indication of magnitude of the issues that you're facing. Okay, so I found that very, very valuable. And what are the, what are the things the board can do to assist you?
Wow, that's, that's a broad one, but, but our question, I think providing a forum like this to be able to continue to update and, and, you know, be held accountable in some ways to the data, to making sure that what we're doing is being effective is important. You know, it's, it's, I found it very useful to sit down, pull together the data from various different avenues. As John pointed out, there's quite a lot of input into this process. And sometimes, oftentimes in the day to day, week of working with these, you sort of lose sight of sometimes the scope of the challenges or where things have gone. So even just having these presentations where we're pulling things together and being held accountable to a process is valuable and helpful. But, you know, potentially being open in the future, when we continue to look down the road at things like curriculum that might need to be rolled out and supported, or as, as we perhaps grow some of our alternative programming down the line. You know, some funding and some support that way would also be, I think, valuable for sure. And if you know of resources that come to light or, you know, you have other avenues that maybe we're missing, obviously we'd appreciate any support that way as well.
Thank you. All right. Anybody, do you have anything else there?
No, just thank you for the time this evening. And like I said, you know, feel free to reach out if you have anything further or if you think of anything further after, after tonight's presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next presentation is the district website. Mobile apps, mass communications. Nick?
Yeah, so I just figured I'd put together, you know, a presentation for everybody. Just kind of highlighting where we are, where we're kind of coming from and where we hope to go this summer. So just a little bit of background to start off. We are looking at a website, a mobile app and some sort of mass communication tool. Currently, we are using Squarespace as our website provider. We obviously do not have a mobile app at this time. And we're currently using a company known as School Messenger for the mass communication. And right now, that's the company that provides our, the all calls, you know, in case of emergencies and things like that. So we did move to this most recent iteration of our website in May of 2017. I wasn't around back then, but based on everything that I've been told from, you know, board members, families, staff members, it is an upgrade over what we have, but a lot of what we're finding is that it's still not quite what we need. There are a lot of things on our current website platform that just can't be done. One example of that, so I, you know, I spent a decent amount of time revamping our and there are still some elements that I have not been able to create through Squarespace. One thing is to make it searchable in any other way than using a, you know, Ctrl F function and then typing in somebody's name. Also, the process of adding or deleting a staff member from that list can take as much as five to seven minutes of time, which obviously is quite a large amount of time to just moving one or adding one staff member. A lot of where this kind of conversation around bundling began was talking about mobile apps and this idea of trying to create a tool in which we could, you know, give a deliverable to our families where they would have something a little bit more kind of readily accessible. Behind an app would be to have, you know, scheduling and, you know, maybe some notification system. You know, calendars, board meetings, you know, whatever it is that we really want to let people know about. And looking at that, what we found is that many of these companies, in order to make it, make the communication, the website and the app all work together, they, a lot of them are offering bundle deals. So again, kind of going down that path. So again, we, we are using School Messenger as a communication tool. And talking with that company, we have found out that we're not even really close to using that tool to what we could be using it for. They've added a lot of features that we can now use, you know, two-way communication between, you know, a staff member, a teacher and families is possible through, you know, our tool. You know, there's other things that we could eventually incorporate down the road such as attendance notifications. Somebody's lunch account goes under a certain, a certain dollar threshold. So those are all things that we could, you know, add to something that we're currently using. I did want to bring up a survey that we did in 2018 before my arrival. It was in general kind of speaking to communication and a lot of efforts that we are, you know, currently talking about, you know, through the communication plan, a lot of things that I've been doing since I've come aboard. So we did have almost 170 respondents and I pulled a couple of data points that I found interesting. So right now, or at least in 2018, only about 20% of people said that they got relevant information from our website with the overwhelming response being email being the top answer, 81%. Over 60% of people said that finding information on our website takes time. And then if you add in that 18.6% that can't find the information online on our website, that's a very, you know, large chunk of people that can't readily find what they're looking for. And then just looking at some things that we were told we need to do better about is communicating, you know, staff and student achievements that the website needs. So last fall, I began the process of reaching out to companies that offer these bundled supports. School Messenger being one of them, ended up kind of paring it down to three companies that I, I felt were really good. And could really offer the services that we need. Process did get put on hold a little bit just because, you know, making sure that we had the budget funding because, you know, some of these efforts are a little bit more expensive than we're currently accustomed to. But we're getting a lot of new features and things that we didn't previously have before. So something that we could do, for example, is turn our staff directory and, and create these more integrated teacher pages where people could, you know, link more information about their, their classroom websites. And, you know, if we get a new LMS, there could be some compatibility there to really kind of make it more than just a name with a position and a number. We're going to get some further social media and Google integration, meaning that with the press of a couple of buttons, a process that would normally take me, you know, upwards of 10 minutes can now take me, you know, less than five. Because if I'm posting some sort of, you know, if I'm posting photos of graduation, rather than having to post them on Facebook, post them on Instagram, post them on the website, I can actually collect that all in the backend of the website, push it out to all of those at the same time. I could even, you know, send text messages and things like that. There's also going to be a lot more granular permissions, meaning that I would be kind of the overarching person looking at the website and I could put people in charge of specific pages. So say, you know, we, we have our activities page and we want to make sure that's constantly up to date. Maybe Heather Lindstad would be in charge of that page, but I would always have the general oversight of being able to approve something before it goes out. There have been multiple occasions where somebody has put something on the website. I've had to, you know, rush to a computer and try to fix it because they published it and it didn't, you know, it didn't look good. It wasn't mobile compatible, some of these other things. So a few weeks ago, I did present to the communication committee, which is made up of school board members, teachers, parents, administrators, and we ultimately decided that School Messenger would be the company that we would like to move forward with. So just a little bit of overview, they are, they do seem to be based on all the data points that I've referenced, the kind of largest provider for a lot of these services. You know, whether it be the app, whether it be the website, whether it be notification services, just they, they work with an immense amount of school districts, numbers of students. So I'm just going to kind of go over some of the, you know, kind of quick hits of things that we'll be getting with this service. And I've broken it down into the different areas. So as I said before, the School Messenger website will have some sort of expandable directory, which would mean that the directory that we've already built would become enhanced that much more. We would gain the ability to do things like pop-up alerts, which would mean, say, there is a, you know, a two hour delay or a cancellation. Previously, the only way that we could apply that was the red at the top of the website. And we can only do one of those. With this pop-up alert, it would actually come up at the forefront. You can actually look at the website, click cast. Would just be that additional kind of we would get greater control of what I call news stories. So currently, our website is a pretty web of, I want to say almost 20 different blogs that I post these, you know, photos. And we'd have a greater control of, you know, being to eliminate all the separate blogs into one, you know, cohesive blog where I could target. into one, you know, cohesive blog where I could target stories to different school pages. I think another thing that's really beneficial for school boards today is that they have this creation of document folders on webpages. So currently, we serve our school board agendas and documents through Google Sheets. And what we would be able to do instead of that is to create kind of a document folder on the website, it's look a lot cleaner, and members of the public or everybody else would be able to actually search up to these folders. So every time I drop a new agenda, every time I set a minutes, somebody would get a notification that there's a new document there. So those are just some of the highlights. There's a lot more, they look more neat. We'd have the ability to actually have dedicated websites for each school. So we'd be able to, the tabs on the top of the screen, we would be able to customize those to each school, so we wouldn't have any more issues like we do on the current websites where you have to scroll all the way to the bottom of the websites for schools just to see all those little buttons. Actually organize that a lot better. So School Messenger actually has two different apps that they offer. And the communication app, we actually could implement right now because it's a part of the communication platform. So what this app, I would say that it's probably most similar to an app known as Remind, which I do know that we use at least at RMS and maybe some other, you know, applications throughout the district as well. What this allows us to do is to send push notifications and other things directly to people's phone when we have important news and things that we need to let them know about. But it also creates that two-way communication that I was referring to, and that a teacher could set up, you know, could get the contact information of all parents in their class, and they could actually communicate back and forth, sharing documents, sharing images. So, you know, if you needed to get some field trip permission forms or, you know, something like that, you could actually send it out through this communication app. Parents could fill it out and then send it back to the teacher. You can also have, you know, group messaging, and that can be as, these functions can be as large as district-wide and as small as parent-to-teacher. The custom app, which kind of started this conversation, would be, you know, it would be set up similar to how like an iPhone or any other phone is set up, where you have various buttons that you would press, and then you would, you know, gain access to a certain area. So you could have, again, news, we could go to the athletic webpage, we could go to any of these number, number of other things. We can completely customize this app. We have the ability to work with School Messenger to make it look how we want it to look. I put one example up on the screen right here. And, you know, say we put the directory as one of those buttons, and we decide six months down the road, based on analytics, which they give us access to, that we, nobody's actually clicking on the directory. We can actually remove that and we can add, you know, different buttons. So it's not set in stone type of app. We do have the ability to decide what people might want more. The other point about these apps selectively is, I was told by the company to look at them almost like Facebook and Facebook Messenger, and that our custom app would be, you know, kind of the Facebook-type app where we'd get access to news and other things. Then the communication app would be, you know, Facebook Messenger, and that they would communicate together, but they are in different apps. Just to summarize, School Messenger, the notification system, again, we do have a lot of that potential where we can, you know, add a lot of other supports and features. One thing that I think is, you know, a really great idea is that we can do anonymous reporting through the notification system, and that we could set up a page on the website where if somebody had a complaint, we would have the ability to have them actually submit a complaint, which we could send to whoever we wanted to. I would, you know, I would think that we could send school-related ones to the administrator, but it would allow the ability to either include or not include your contact information. It would be an optional thing so that, you know, if somebody wasn't necessarily comfortable, they could do it anonymous, or if they really wanted that, you know, follow-up and follow-through, they could include their contacts. It also would allow that, you know, say, something specific is canceled at Jaffrey Grade School, it would allow for, you know, Susan or somebody else to actually send out a notification just to the group of folks. Another thing that we could also explore is the communication plan, they actually have a template that we could actually submit via email. So instead of me just kind of sending a bunch of texts and some links off to families, there's actually some template processing where we can pull in some of our news stories, you know, link surveys and other things, and we can make it look a little better. If you're just a standard email. So I did provide a bunch of links to school districts that are currently School Messengers, split library, map, and the website. When we get to the question-and-answer period, I'm more than happy to kind of grab some of these places if you wish, but I guess the final slide that probably people would want to know is the cost. So just like with most other, you know, new programs or platforms, there's a first-year setup fee, which is just a little bit over $13, subsequent years would be based on student help, and they've put it as a price based on estimate, you know, about $2,500. So if you look at that, you know, $7,500, we're currently paying, you know, almost $5,000 between our website and the School Messenger program. So the only, the actual additional cost to the district would be about $2,500 a year, you know, not counting this first year of additional setup fees. So it's, it is, you know, more expensive, but it's, you're getting so much more, you know, interactability, you know, so many more features for that, you know, $2,500. I really think that, you know, it's a great way for us to be able to communicate with our families. I think that there's, you know, that our communication plan does talk about the two-way communication being very important, and I think that we have additional ability to do that through these platforms. So that was kind of my rundown. Obviously, if you have any questions, you want to look at websites or anything like that, feel free to let me know.
Thank you, Nick. Okay, well, let's see if there's any questions. Patty?
I am just really grateful for this possible solution. I think the committee did a great job. I'm sure they evaluated a whole lot of information that, there's hundreds of these kinds of companies out there, so to be able to narrow it down to just one is great. And I think the costs that we're also, we have to consider is what we've lost over the years by miscommunication or issues with communication. So I think this might solve a lot of things.
Patty, do you have any questions?
I would just say kudos to Nick because he did a lot of the initial research for the committee, and, you know, I'm on that committee and so is Alicia, and I think this is exciting to think that we could really greatly improve our ability to communicate. And I know two of the things that stood out that Nick went over were, one was the two-way communication with parents through the app, and also the customizable app. Did I say that right? It just had so much more flexibility, it seemed. There was so much more you could do to, with the custom app than the other products that we looked at. So I think that's going to be a huge benefit for people to be able to have everything at their fingertips, from athletic schedules to the school calendar to the directory. Like you said, I mean, it just, it definitely seemed like the best mobile app possibility, so.
Two quick points that I did just remember. So yes, we are through this proposal, moving forward with, you know, apps that people can download, but all of these websites are designed to be 100% mobile-friendly, so you don't need to have, you know, there is the one app that you would need to have some of the additional, you know, two-way communication. And obviously, if you want some of these push notifications to your phone, you need to download the apps. But it doesn't mean that our website doesn't become any less mobile-friendly. If anything, we also gain in that section, and that a lot of our pages right now are not designed to be mobile-friendly. The second point is that ADA compliance issues. We do have a number of kind of red flags on our website right now relative to ADA. The website, when it's handed over to us, when completed, would be 100% ADA compliant, and there are also tools within the backend to make sure that we can keep that complacency in place.
Thank you. Anything else, Heidi?
No, I mostly have things.
John? John, do you have any questions?
Yes, just one question, Nick. You mentioned that School Messenger, that the company says we're not currently using the program to its full potential. And when I look at programs like this and apps too, I'm always curious about how it is that we, you know, provide assistance and training, training and assistance in using these kind of programs. Obviously, there's some people that are going to pick them up quickly, especially younger people, maybe have more familiarity, but then among the general population, you'll have some people who will be able to use these things easily, and others will need some training and support. Any thoughts on how that gets done?
Yeah, that's, that's actually a good point, and I do apologize if some of these things are coming up through questions. I had a presentation, I think, was two or three times longer than this for the communication committee. Most of these companies...
Four, five times.
Yeah. Most of these companies, School Messenger included, does include 24/7/365 customer support that would be available to me and, you know, administrators and other folks. There also are numerous training opportunities available from the company to the community. So that's, that's actually rolled in with the process as an additional deliverable, whereas when you look at Squarespace, we're not getting any of that right now, unless it's through a, it's a very complicated problem to actually get somebody to speak to.
All right. Thank you. Laurel, Laurel, do you have any questions?
Yes. So what is the intended timeline for this?
Yeah, of course. So I spoke to them about that prior to, you know, pushing this forward, and they have said that if we can really push forward on our deliverables, because there are obviously certain pieces need from us, the website, there's a pretty decent chance that we should have the deliverable by the start of the next two years. Definitely within quarter one period at a minimum.
In 2020?
Yeah. So we would have a new website by the end of the year, with the hope that it would be available before the start of this year.
Including all the functionality of the apps and, okay. And how much of a heavy lift is it to get all these deliverables?
So my, my current plan is, you know, obviously, I'm making this presentation tonight. The discussion would hopefully be to, you know, move forward as soon as tomorrow with executing some sort of a treatment. From there, there would be some communication back and forth between me and the company, but I would really love to send out a survey sometimes weekly, just trying to get some community support, some staff support, just to have some basic questions answered, like do what people feel is working currently, what people would like to, you know, improve upon. We would then have this with the company and then framework and the app.
Okay. And where will Ruben find the money in the budget?
This, this was actually built in to our 2020-2021 budget. The additional cost, you know, obviously, we planned for the communication program and then for our current website, but we built in enough money to make any of the three options I was looking at at the time to stay within budget.
Could you tell me where in the budget is? Do you know?
I unfortunately do not know enough about the budget codes to be able to give you a specific line. I could ask Carrie and get that for you.
That's all right. If I can't find...
It's in the technology line, but whether we put online subscriptions or whether we put it in for something else, I can't remember exactly, but we can get it for you.
Okay. So just so I understand, the first year includes whatever the annual subscription is. It's just, there's just an additional charge for the setup?
Yeah, so it's still the $7,551. It's the additional, little over $5,000 would be for the initial setup fees of actually putting together the website and the app.
Great. Great. Nice work to the, for you and the committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alicia, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I was with Heidi on this committee also, but I do want to thank Nick for your work with this, and it feels like we're finally reaching the end of this long road.
Thank you, Nick. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I mean, I guess based on the financials of the proposal, I don't know if it requires any school board vote, but, you know, certainly would entertain, you know, a blessing or whatever, just to give me the validation that I'm on the right path.
I don't think it requires a vote either, but someone can make a motion if they'd like to.
I'll make a motion to give Nick our blessing.
In all things.
Was that a second, Laurel?
Yes. Oh, my gosh, we're punching this 9:30. Yeah.
We have a motion to indicate that the board supports Nick in principle. Agreed by Laurel, seconded by Alicia. Any discussion?
One other question. For the, for the companies that you narrowed your search down to, is the pricing comparable?
So again, three companies we looked at. School Messenger had the, it was the highest subsequent year price by, I think, less than a couple hundred dollars. There was one more company that was expensive, more expensive on the first year. The third company was significantly cheaper, but they didn't offer us a lot of the communication needs that we currently would need. So in terms of mass communication, we'd be taking a step back.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Patty, how do you vote?
Hi.
Heidi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Laurel?
Hi.
Alicia?
Yes.
I vote yes. So motion carries 600.
Thank you.
Risk management report.
May I propose that we postpone this to the next meeting?
This is, there's no actionable substance here. I mean, there's a lot of information. I'm sure there's more conversation that would have. I would have to recommend the same thing.
I'm just looking at the hour and knowing that there's a couple of things you want to cover in Board Minutes.
Is that the, does the board want to defer this?
Yes. Yes.
Do we need a motion, Charlie?
No, we can just table it.
Okay.
Okay, we'll table this item until next, the next meeting. All right. Committee updates.
We have an action item or two.
Yep.
Sorry?
Item number eight.
Okay, item number eight, finance manager.
This was, this was a lot of information, way more information than I had anticipated.
Well, it's actually just basically taking the job descriptions and putting them side by side. Originally, I thought it was going to be easier in that I figured we took the accounting job description and just changed it a little bit. So what I tried to do here was just make it a little bit easier. Most of that language, even if it's not word-for-word, is very similar in meaning, but the additional aspects of the finance manager is in bold. So those additional aspects from the accountant to the finance manager would really be supervision. If you could scroll down, supervision, support.
Supervision, support, perhaps doing a lot more assistance, deeper assistance, I should say, when coming to preparing budgets and not just simply printing items off or running reports, but actually having a lot more involvement in the process. Probably involvement in our finance committee meetings as well at times. The person takes a little more responsibility or perhaps a lot more responsibility when it comes to act as a primary contact for property and liability. There's supervision changes here. And some of the roles that are currently being done by the accountant, like having to do with the monthly or ongoing reporting of grants. The goal is to shift that functionality over to the existing accounts payable position, which we think has the, you do that. We were in the process of trying to shift one more item over to the payroll position because we felt that it was time. I can't remember what that role was. Carrie would be able to tell me a little bit better, tell you a little better. But because of the payroll change, that would be put on hold for a bit. But basically, if we go down to the last page, you know, John had asked, can we see a picture? And I think that was really what the difference is. If you look over to the left, we have the current original flow or the current organizational flow, which is from me to the business administrator. And then she is the direct supervisor of the facilities manager, payroll, accounts payable, and the accountant. And the payroll, accounts payable, and the accountant, you know, there's a lot of busyness that occurs there. And so what ends up happening is that business administrator, through the oversight and support, often gets tied in with a lot of the busyness of those roles. And so, and I would say does not get as much opportunity to focus on some of the higher order things that needs to happen in business, but also the facilities managing that is there. So we don't have a facilities director, we have a facilities manager, which means you got to have someone who's at least working with the financial aspects of the facilities and the support of that facilities manager as well, perhaps writing RFPs or doing other types of projects. Human resources, she and I both kind of do a supervision of that. There's a lot of reasons for that. But that's kind of on the side. So basically what you get here in this model shift, you can see that rather than direct oversight and support of four different positions, and some of those are very, very different, to go into reporting two. And then that finance manager will then focus on supporting the payroll and accountability of the accounts payable. And by doing so, the idea is to create better efficiencies, to create a better way to make sure that we have some sustainability within our organization. There's a little bit of overlap of some of positions so that training becomes easier. And also if someone is not around, we can, we have a little bit of duplication of efforts to be able to continue on and not have any blips. And it would increase the business administrator's ability to really support the facilities manager. We, one thing that we've learned, well, let's put it this way, we didn't learn this. We, I think everyone here knows that we have aging facilities. We have some areas that we need to improve. And in order to do that, what I think we have learned over the last couple of years, maybe three years especially, is that it takes a lot of time, a lot of discussion, a lot of planning to be able to improve even small things within the facilities. And it's something that we really need to dedicate our time and efforts to. And so I believe this model provides a more efficient way or effective, maybe perhaps effective way of making that happen. That's the gist of the difference. What, any questions or thoughts?
I would remind everyone that Carrie also oversees food service and transportation.
Transportation is usually not too bad. This year it was quite, quite the, quite the different story. She did a great job with the negotiating that went on around that situation around the March timeframe.
So Ruben, this is, this is probably the third, maybe third time we've seen or heard about this. And, and it, you know, it's talked about a little bit. Then we got a little bit more meat on it. This has much more detail. Has anything changed from your first initial thoughts with Carrie to now? You know, anything you kind of decided, yeah, we won't tackle that now, or anything you've said, hey, this gives us this additional piece we hadn't thought of? I mean, it's been, it's been a month and a half. There's been a lot of evolution of this.
Yeah. No, I mean, well, this is, this picture, and I again appreciate John asking for a picture because I think the picture describes it. It hasn't changed from a month and a half ago. I think the goal is to be able to make some, make the system, the business office more efficient and effective and also have some longevity. One of my, you know, personal focuses is to make sure that whatever we do here in this district, that there's, there's sustainability to that. You've heard me here that use the word sustainability throughout the course of years. And it's really important that we build the systems that allow for things just to keep moving. So that 15 years down the road, we're still on an upward trajectory that we're not having many different, you know, many situations where we have to kind of rebuild. Or like when I came here, what, whatever took place beforehand, you know, I came with, there were, there wasn't really stability in the finance area. Certainly it lost it very quickly. There wasn't human resources. There, you know, facilities, there were some difficulties there. There were a lot of difficulties there. We have a point where I think we have a good team. I think the business office, apart from the fact that we just lost the payroll person, although she's still helping us out in the transition, we've, we've developed a very strong team there. And I think this really will solidify that and get it to the next level. Because I don't, I don't think we've quite gotten to the effectiveness level that we need to be in the business office. And it's not, for lack of trying or trying to find different ways to do things, things are just really busy. And I think this streamlines some of those efforts.
Okay. Patty, you have any more questions?
No, I think we should move ahead.
Okay. Heidi, do you have any questions?
Nope.
John, do you have any questions?
Yeah, you know, I've spent sort of a good part of my day trying to get my head around some of this. But yeah, the document that we got today is very helpful. And no, I don't have any questions at this point. I'm, I'm fine with this.
Laurel, do you have any questions?
I make a motion, we make this change.
She's tired. I was like, okay.
We have a motion by Laurel, seconded by Patty. Okay, now we can go to discussion. Is there any discussion?
The discussion that, I'll just throw it out so that you can have discussion. We had conversations about moving people into the role who are already here or going out because we talked about that a little bit earlier in the evening as well. School board is not-
I don't have a, any discussion around that personally, but I do have some questions. Okay, that Laurel helped me to put into discussion later. Okay. Accountant, accountant tasks are not going away. Is that correct?
That is correct.
They're being included into the finance manager's role.
Minus some other things that will be shifted to the accounts payable around the area of grants, which is a fairly time-consuming process to open up the opportunity to do the other things in the higher level items.
Okay, so we had a full-time accounts accountant. We're taking some of that away and giving it to accounts payable? All right. And then we're going to add the finance manager additional things to that.
Responsibilities, yes.
Okay, so what we've done is we've basically added another layer of management. But in the process, we are not going to be coming back in next year's budget or anything, asking for any more accountant-type resources.
Oh, that's correct. No, we will not, we will not need that. What we have found is that through the course of time, we've been able to make the accounts payable more efficient. And that's allowed us to be able to look to push, I don't want to say the word push, shift some of the responsibilities in that direction and eventually shift some others to payroll once that's a more stable position. But we will not be asking for any new business office personnel. The accounting can be done.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Okay, I've got a motion and a second to adopt the proposal to change the accountant role to the finance manager role. Patty?
Hi.
Heidi?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Laurel?
Hi.
Alicia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries 600. All right. Thank you, Ruben.
Thank you.
Okay. Now waivers of purchasing requirements for framing the facility garage?
During today's facilities committee meeting, we discussed work that has been put out for bid, including framing the facilities garage, framing and roofing it. The work for the SAU door between the SAU offices and the school and some demolition work in the high school. The fishbowl windows at the entry and the strange-looking storage unit in the exercise room. And Ruben anticipates having the bids gathered by end of business Wednesday. And the facilities committee will meet on Thursday to determine who would be put forward to the board. We, we asked the board for waiver of purchasing requirements in case we do not get three bids total. And also we asked if the board would authorize the superintendent to enter into an agreement based on the facilities committee's recommendations so that the contract can be executed and the work started before our next school board meeting.
I make a motion that we waive-
If I could add, if I just add to that, so for clarification purposes, it would be great to have a motion to waive purchasing requirements during this time because there's, there's more than just, just the three bids. I think we'll have the three bids. That's not the issue. As much as, although I suppose one could fall through, as much as the amount of them is more than like a quote range is what it's going to come out to. So we want to-
30,000, yeah.
Yeah. So it's a little bit different. We'd have to go out through a very long process if we were going to try to do this to the T. And it would be very helpful for a lot of projects we're trying to finish up right now. If we could just waive those purchasing requirements, as long as we're not overspending our, our areas.
So, so are there specific things you want to waive as opposed to purchasing requirements? Because that just throws the whole book out the window.
Right. I don't know if I'm in favor of waiving purchasing requirements for the next, for the summer.
Oh, no, 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 no. Just, just right now for the completion of facilities work.
What other specific projects? Can we identify those?
Yeah. The item that, that Laurel just spoke of, that, which is the facilities garage, the framing of that, the SAU door that would separate the SAU from the middle school, a couple of the demolition areas. Some other things that we've been doing around trying to get the exercise room done, the Pratt curtain divider, some of the playground, you know, stuff. I mean, a lot, you know, some of these things were already approved to shift money in different places. But just making certain that we have the ability to move fast and more effortlessly with some of this work. Like, for instance, rather than having to make a transfer into an area, as long as we're not overspending that budget category, you know, we'd like to be able to do that without having to constantly make shifts.
Well, Ruben, correct me if I'm wrong, but the only upcoming project anticipated that could possibly rise to this level is the conference room at Ridge Memorial.
The conference-
And parking lot work.
Well, parking lot work, I think the exercise room is one area that was about $28,000 to both do the room and also put all the equipment in place. There were three quotes and so forth, and it's under $30,000. But part of the, you know, requirements is making sure that we get all these transfers in. And because we, if we transfer something over $3,000, we're supposed to bring it to the board. So I have no problem, you know, giving the prod, projects to the board of what we're trying to accomplish in this, this timeframe right now and to get it situated. But having to go and wait two weeks to get, you know, a $3,000 transfer or something like that, when the money's there, it's in the category, it's just not in the specific line. So we're just trying to give a little bit of leeway there for the purpose of audit.
Do we have that issue with the weight room? Looking at a budget transfer tonight?
No, I don't. I mean, that's not the information that Carrie gave me. He just wanted to make certain that we were good for the audit purposes. I'm not sure that we have violated or anything at all by any stretch of the imagination. It's just a matter of making sure that we have that flexibility.
So-
I, I would make a motion that we waive the purchasing requirements with respect to three quotes and securing board approval for expenditures exceeding $30,000. If that's a threshold.
$3,000, right?
No, 30.
Okay.
For facilities garage framing, the SAU door project and the demolition projects in the high school. In the entrance lobby and the exercise room.
Yep.
And authorize the superintendent to execute a contract based on the facilities committee's recommendation after review of the quotes received for those three projects.
Okay, could, could you add that this waiver is for the period from this school board meeting till the next?
And that this waiver is in effect from now until July 6th.
Okay.
But I, I pretty much designated it for these three projects.
Right.
Okay.
It's for these three projects and it's to cover things until the next board meeting? If, if you need to do something for the next board meeting? Correct?
If you need, if, I, I, I'm confused.
Well, what I'm saying, what the, what the motion does is it covers those three projects. It provides a waiver for those three projects, and it provides the waiver until the next board meeting. So in other words, if you have to do something between now and the next board meeting, you can do it.
Okay, for the, for those three projects.
For those three projects, yes.
Okay, and so everyone knows the facilities committee is planning to meet on Thursday to decide.
And I guess I just want to make sure I understand. Ruben, did, were there other projects that you felt you also needed flexibility with right now in the next two weeks? Or those were the three main ones?
No, the, I mean, the work, that's the, that's the new work that is happening. Everything else is in, uh, place. Um, I had just been given some, um, numbers. What we've been doing is focusing on, at this point in time, at the end of the year, we don't typically take budget transfers. And, um, I wanted to make sure that we were covered for, uh, any, any work that we've been doing where we have the money in that, uh, category, basically. But it's, what Laurel suggested is what we talked about this morning. That's the, that's the most important thing. Um, so I think that we're fine with that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Patty.
Patty, okay. Got a motion for Laurel, second by Patty. Any discussion? Okay. How do you vote, Patty?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
John?
C.
Laurel?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yes.
Charlie votes aye. Motion carries six, zero, zero. Okay, revised school board calendar.
I move we accept the proposed revised school board calendar to move a school board meeting from Monday to Tuesday because it's an election day, a voting day.
Second.
Second. Oh, sorry, Alicia.
Before we move forward with that, the issue that we had, um, the highlight is that it was on Labor Day, and I moved it to Tuesday, which is the election day.
Oh.
So the.
So we need to move it to Wednesday?
So do we, it's just a discussion of do we want to move it to Wednesday? Do we want to move it to, uh, you know, the week prior? It's, if you look at, uh, August, for example, we have five Mondays in August. So if we moved it ahead to August 31st, we'd have a meeting the first, third, and fifth, uh, Monday in August. And then we would have just one meeting in September. Uh, again, the other proposal would be that perhaps we could just move it to Wednesday or some other day in September to have two in that month.
Maybe August 31st is better.
I think August is better.
What's, what's the first day of school?
The week prior to that, let's see. Yeah. Seventeenth, eighteenth, nineteenth, twenty, twenty-one. Yeah, I think the 25th is the first day.
25th, okay, so that would be. All right, so you want to do it August 31st?
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
And I made my motion accordingly.
Okay, second.
Second motion.
It's Alicia. Okay, Patty?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries six, zero, zero. Okay, policy review, second reading. Does anybody have any? You move we accept, go ahead.
I, 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 I move that we accept the policies as presented.
Second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion? Okay, Patty?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Laurel?
Aye.
Alicia?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries six, zero, zero. Committee updates.
Would it be?
Okay, board, commit, go ahead, Laurel.
Would it be possible to postpone these to our next meeting?
That would be.
I think we know what's going on with education.
It's up to the board.
I think so. Yeah, I mean, we've heard from communication, and there's nothing to report on wellness, and yeah.
Okay, so.
Needs next week.
So we'll defer the, uh, board committee meetings and the district committee meetings, uh, till our updates until, uh, next meeting.
Good.
Okay, public comments?
All right, again, just to catch the field, you can text me, six, zero, three, nine, three, three, zero, nine, seven, three. You can chat, or you could raise your hand. Uh, we can give people some time, as there is one comment that's been, uh, queued up in the chat. It is from Deanna Wilson of Ringe. And she says, keep up the good work with social emotional support for students, as that is extremely important to have a safe and healthy learning environment. Also, I'm really excited about the new communication tools proposed as communication has been a big issue in years past. Thank you for all the hard work you are doing for our district.
Ooh.
So are there any other hands or calls or anything?
There's other, one more chat.
Uh, Anne Wheeler of Jaffrey says, graduation was awesome. Our community is fabulous.
I agree with you, Anne.
Nice.
I think we all agree, it was beautiful. And we would love to see a similar ceremony in the future. Well, not, no, hopefully we can stick closer to one another, but loved that it was outdoors and would like to see more conversation about.
Agreed.
Hey, any other public comments?
I got nothing.
Okay, so let's move on to the board matters. Uh, board committee processes and procedures.
Recommend that we table this until a time that our board chair may be present.
I agree.
Yeah, I agree.
I guess the one question I would have is could everybody, it doesn't have to be right now, it could be, you know, this week. Could you just confirm that all, uh, committee meetings on that calendar are accurate so that I can post it?
Yes, I, I think policy.
We made a change in policy, so I'll make sure that that's reflected.
And Nick, I sent out an email with respect to the facilities committee upcoming meetings.
Yeah, I saw that, uh, this, this morning or this afternoon.
Yes.
Yep.
So that is that information.
Okay.
Okay, for future items, have returning to school year, return to school for the next school year. And, uh, next item.
Under board matters, do we want to, uh, let, are we, do we need to discuss the proposed retreat at all?
Oh, yeah, we need to get a date for that, you're right.
I believe Ruben sent out an email about July 9th.
July 9th was a day that everyone who replied to the poll, and then everyone I followed up with afterwards who did not provide a bowl, uh, indicated they could make. So, um, that was the only day. The seventh was pretty close to that. There was one administrator that couldn't make it. And the eighth, I think there was a board member that couldn't make. So in that range, the ninth was the one day where everyone could.
Okay. You anticipate an all-day event?
I do. I think that originally, when talking it over with Mercia, she was thinking about something a little bit longer than that. I think a day would be a great way to start.
Okay, like, 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM?
Like nine, nine to three.
Sounds good.
So the ninth, we said, right? Sorry.
July 9th, yes.
Okay.
And what that will do is the administrative retreat that I have the three days, the following Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, I'll be doing that with my team. So it'll be good to have our work done ahead of time.
Right.
Good.
Okay, so Nick, you're gonna, Nick, you're gonna do the invite for that?
I can.
Okay, because this is, this is still going to be a, uh, remote meeting?
Uh, we'd have to discuss that to see if there's any possible way of a social distancing togetherness. It'll be, it'll be certainly tough to do an all-day remote learn, I mean, a, a remote meeting. So maybe.
I would agree. We're halfway there tonight.
And it's tough.
It would be nice to do it live if we could find a place where we could maintain the social distance. That would be great.
How about the airport, John?
Sounds, sounds good, Charles.
Uh, under the future items, I would, I would urge all members to be prepared to form that committee at our next board meeting.
Oh, certainly.
The ad hoc committee?
Yes, I think that we're actually maybe a little, half a step behind.
I've got eight parents already set, so, um, who want to be part of that. Uh, and so in talking with other superintendents, they all have various size committees. Uh, I don't think we need to have as big as some. Um, but I think it's, if we have a focus of starting around that early July timeframe, that will give us the time we need for the committee work, because the state will have just finished its work.
They, they expect to report something on the 30th, correct?
The end of June, beginning of July, yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, very good. I move we adjourn.
Second.
Seconded?
Me, Alicia.
Alicia, thank you. Um, have a motion, second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Good night, everybody.
Please drive safely.
Thank you, everyone.